Sally, did you get your mic on?
What?
Your mic on?
Yes.
You caught a lot enough to get picked up over here. So we're ready to go? All right, six o'clock, we'll start, we'll say the pledge. We've got everybody here tonight, so that's good. I haven't heard any changes on the agenda, so I'm thinking that's all told in.
You have one in the...
Now you tell them.
I know, I do. Why it's just removing... Number twenty. Twenty D, just for the state. They requested the... The... November twelfth, we had... Director of Engineering's report. Just you?
Kathy. Paul C. Yeah, Paul C. Anything else we need to... Up guys? All right, we'll look for a motion to accept the agenda with said changes. There are some motion. Second, okay, call, say aye.
Aye.
Security's... Consent agenda. Any other changes on that one, guys? Oh, question, just... For motion to accept.
Go home.
Second? Second, so call if they ever say aye.
Aye.
Move on to five. Minutes from the last meeting. Do you see anything in there that was changed? To accept the minutes, I was read.
Second.
Chelsea does a second, call if they ever say aye.
Aye.
Security. All right, public comment, where you got any ones? Introduce yourself, yeah.
My name is Roger Memgey, I live over at six twenty-five, Boulevard Court. Kind of frustrated with what's going on with our... Our project that they started last fall. I was promised last fall, we were gonna have concrete, they cut mine in my son's driveway off. Didn't get done, they promised me the yards were gonna be done. I do have pictures, if you'd like to see the disaster of my yard. I mean, I put a lot of money into my yard, that's my prerogative. But now we're in June, I've talked to... I've talked to KPH in the middle of April, and he assured me, one of the foremen's, it wasn't Josh at that time, he was one that was in there, one of the foremen's, made... Informants, that as soon as the process, they would get over there, and they would get our concrete, and the road, and my ditches, our ditches and our yards all fixed. Well, now it's June, I've talked to Eric on the twenty... See, the twenty-third or twenty-fourth. I've talked to him twice, from Interstate on it, and he gave me some stuff, and then I got Josh's number, because I had one and it wasn't his anymore, I talked to him last year, I was... I was deal... I've been dealing with these guys for a long time. And they assured me they were gonna get over there, they're trying to do it, but yet now we're June, and this is my yard. I mean, if I have the pictures, if I can show them to you, you guys can just look through them here, I very much appreciate it, you'll understand, like I said, I... I put a sprinkler system in, you guys can... That's mine in my son's yard, I put a sprinkler system in, I paid a lot of money to water my yard, so that's my prerogative. But I do expect my yard to get cut back, now we're going on almost ten months. You know, I mean, now I gotta use the sprinkler to even water, because my sprinkler system isn't... Last year, they were supposed to move my pipe, my sprinkler, because I said, "You're gonna tear it off at the fall." They come over, cut it off, they were supposed to seal, they didn't do it, I had to do that. I had to do it, they had a hole next to my curb stop, all the way down, I called and it might've been Jim. Or it was either you, were you there last year, it was one of the people from Interstate? Yes, and they never, they never come and did it, I did it. I thought, "Well, what's gonna happen in the winter, it's gonna, I'm gonna be the one that's gonna suffer, 'cause I ain't gonna have water in my house, because if there's a hole there, it's gonna freeze." I mean, that is really insane. I mean, that's crazy, now we're talking June, and my yard's still in shambles. I had a run-in, one of their guys, when they were gonna do my sprinkler system that one day, one of the workers, he... I said, "You're not putting that in the right place," he told me, "I don't effing care, I'm not the one gonna be responsible," and it was blows off. I mean, you know, and I called, like, Jim, I called Josh about it.
One of the workers?
Yeah, one of the workers said that, and the foreman told me this time, "Well, he ain't allowed in our court." 'Cause I said, "Now you know what, I know the law." My yard was immaculate, I got pictures, there was, I mean, I spent a lot of money in my yard, I said, "Now you guys can saw it mine, and you can saw it Cody's, I'm not doing grass seed, you didn't get it done last year." And the guy from KPH said, "Yes, we'll get that done." But still, I said, "Because after that guy smarted off like that, you know, that's absolutely ridiculous."
So has anybody's lawn back there? They haven't been back there at all, right?
They come, he come, the KPH came in the middle of April, and he just put down a little gravel, I thanked him, because it was like a mud pit trying to get into my house. You know, my garage, every time you drive in it, there's mud on there, it's like, you know, if I wanted to live in the... Out in the country and have a mud road, then I'd do that. But this is insane, I put up with it all last year, you know, from September on. But yeah, no, they haven't been in there since, Josh come in there, the day I called him, he come in that night, he brought in, I think it was AJ's concrete. And they were talking to me and my son, he didn't even know that there was culverts, I took my son's culvert out, because they just dug under his, and his driveway's down, he didn't even know which way it flowed. I'm like, he was talking to my son, I'm like, "Really?" You know, they were good, they were just gonna put concrete, not even put us culvert, he didn't even know they took his culvert out, he said, "I don't even know there's a culvert here." You know, it's, it's crazy. I mean, it's just something, something needs to be done, you know, I pay taxes, and I pay, I mean, I just feel that I'm really getting... Our whole court is, I mean, you go over there, drive over there once, and you'll see what I'm talking about, it's insane.
Yeah, I think you guys were the first on the project.
Yep.
My road was like maybe the third. I was, I was really disappointed to hear that they weren't gonna be redoing the concrete or the asphalt until, who knows when?
Well, see, I was on, I was on the agenda last year, because I was upset with it, and then they assured me that they were gonna get in there before winter, and they would at least get our concrete done, and our yards done. They didn't know if they'd get the asphalt done, so be it, but guess what, nothing.
Yeah, I mean, it's nice for them to only come out and have to do it once. You know, but what does the contract say, what, what were they supposed to do, or how was it supposed to go?
So they've started coming, okay, they hired an ally, they've come along, do some of the restoration work, and they started on Mickey, and they're working, kind of working their way south in areas where they can. Boulevard Court, it's kinda got some outstanding issues, and we're working, there's some... There's some pressure dropping, and we aren't quite sure where it's happening yet, this was before fall. And a lot of times, put into trying to trace that, what the cause of the pressure drop would be. So KPH and their contractor, they elected to leave it sit over the winter, in hopes of this leak, but it was a leak, to show itself, as of this fall, there hasn't been a leak, well, winter, so far, this spring.
Are we still seeing the pressure change?
We just talked about it last week, I don't know if they've engaged on it yet this year. So I'll bring it up tomorrow at the, at the construction meeting, obviously Mr. Murray's not happy, but I can bring it up to...
I'll give you one more, that's, that's my yard, as you can see across, that's my yard.
So I think one of the things, Jim, tomorrow, when you talk with Eric, I mean, we need to get, I'll need to get a timeline, yeah, just to when these are gonna get done. And I wanna know, you know, what, when they're gonna be in, anybody in the neighborhoods fixing this? If there needs to be some type of accounting on this, so that we know when those guys are gonna be in fixing stuff. We have a timeline, 'cause I wanna know when they're gonna be doing this then, 'cause if they're supposed to do it last fall, I need numbers, I need to know when they're gonna be doing it.
Also, can you talk to them about... If that was truly said, like that?
That, that particular...
He shouldn't be working for them, I mean, if it'd been my company, I'd have fired him right then and there.
I don't really appreciate that, so can we just talk to them about that?
We've dealt with KPH a lot of times on these road projects around the area, and in one day, I had one of them calling me a rich bitch, and the guy ignored me to play his video game. So no, I, and this was several years ago, when we were having to use the diversion road to get to town.
I'm sorry, Beth, what was your name?
I'm sorry, I'm Mary Beth Coleman, and I'm on Wall Avenue.
Good.
From the Westbrook Drive entrance sign to the Westbrook Drive exit sign on the south side of the road.
Your property, yes.
Yep. Yeah, and I want your... Yep. I had to have neck surgery, so I've been home a lot, and have been very disappointed, but I'm sorry, I interrupted.
No, that's fine, I mean, you, you know what I'm dealing with. Yeah, it's...
Okay, but I... And yeah, I understand, let's do that, Jim, I need some timeframes, and then I wanna know what neighborhoods they're getting into, and when. That's the only way we're gonna know, when they're gonna be over there, so we can plan this a little bit better, to get that stuff squared away, so, okay?
Yeah, I can...
Then why don't you let us know in the next meeting, and what the schedule is, so that we're all aware of when they're gonna be cleaning up that mess that they've created?
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, anybody else got anything you wanna chit chat about? Yep, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Douglas, I live just down on hundred twelve, Salt, and Conery Road seventeen on the corner there, and then you go west, I'm right along the road there. And every time it rains, right by my approach to come into mine, it's just mud pit. I was just wondering if I could get some gravel out there. I got some pictures, if you wanna look at them on my phone. It's nice, when it's dry, it's perfect, but when it rains, people are dragging mud on my road, and I just put a thousand dollars' worth of gravel on it last year, on my private driveway. They're just dragging mud in there, you come up, pick the garbage up, same thing, you know?
Where are they dragging the mud from, I'm trying to picture...
Off the main road, off the hundred and twelfth. I'm showing the picture of this.
I'm just trying to picture it in my head.
So I'm like standing on Conery Road seventeen west.
Okay, I got you.
So it's just right off the highway. And you can see that, it's the first part, like a hundred and fifty feet of it here is the worst. I've driven down here, there's a few spots, but it's... This is a hundred and twelfth avenue.
Hundred and twelfth avenue, the most east-west there on the south side.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
So, I mean, even if I could get one truck, and I can level with myself, I have a skid steer, but I would just, it'd be nice to get some concrete, you know what I mean?
Right. Jim, are you familiar with that area?
Yeah, city's working on getting loads of gravel through the year, so you're probably a week early. But I don't know, I don't recall if your area was on the list, I'm assuming it was.
Well, that lady from the city told me to come here, and she said it looked like it was on the list, but she had no idea what time.
Okay, yeah, so let's just make sure, 'cause that should be, we should get that.
Yeah, we're...
It's just one really bad spot, if you go out there on this dry, you wouldn't even realize it, you know?
Okay, yeah, at that intersection there, so...
And here's what happened a couple years ago. The guy dug up a bunch of dirt alongside of the road, and sure, part of that is that, and he can't drain it in the ditch, because it never went all the way up to the shoulder. So if he was to cut that down, and get rid of that, at least the water can shed off that.
Okay, let's... Yep, we'll just have him add that to the list, that we're gonna dump some gravel, so...
For your time.
Appreciate it. Okay, anybody else?
Hi, Mary Beth Coleman again.
Okay.
I'm out there on Wall Avenue, and my, my property is on the south side of the road, from the one Westbrook Drive side to the other, which, can I request new signs now that we're part of the city? 'Cause you can't read ours, our old ones. That would be really nice, so people could find us.
Street signs?
But... Yeah, our street signs for Westbrook Drive.
Yeah, they're a little weathered.
Well, yeah, a little, and also, there's no consistency in the actual writing of it, so if someone could check with the old flats and make sure that it is referred to properly instead... Anyway, y'all know what I mean, so, also, since I live there, there has been absolutely no dust control at all, at all.
This year?
Yeah, and I am sick, I have COPD and asthma, I live right on the road, so I cannot open my windows, I've been running air conditioner since, you know, whenever it started getting stuffy and vague. It is getting worse, fifteen miles an hour is ludicrous, nobody does it, and to be truthful...
I do.
Well, you're very unusual, trust me.
I get a pilot behind me, I get it, but I do do the fifteen or less.
Yeah, okay, yeah, no, I got it, well, and most cars, actually, they idle a little faster than that, and that you can't set the cruise control for that, because you might run a kid over in a school zone. It probably is a little slow through there, but that is done, we don't have any police, very little police force enforcement, very little weekends, oh my God, the dirt bikes and the UTVs go blowing by forty-five. And I can say that with pretty comf... you know, confidence, or confidently, that they're going that speed, because I've lived there for almost ten years, I've seen every, how it looks at every speed. And the average is thirty. But it's, the forty-fives and higher are killing us, killing us. And my husband followed to find out when they were gonna start working on our road, to build the beautiful road that we all were promised, including developments, but I'm still a little bitter about being, you know, annexed without our, you know?
Yep.
Yeah, anyway.
But you also, you also remember, okay, so when we did put down the dust control, what that road turned into?
You guys didn't put down the dust control, it was this, it was the...
But no, we, we...
The township.
With the township.
And you guys were told that it would do that.
Right.
But they had already bought it, and it was sitting in a thing, and they had to use it up, because you guys didn't wanna go out and buy anything else. I was there, I heard it, a lot of people were there, a lot of people heard it.
Well, Jim, we gonna put down more?
Want to.
That's not more.
But I'm just saying, it's, if we do that, that's what the road's gonna turn into.
Don't use the same thing, use some oil-based.
What's the alternative, Jim? I know we talked about that with the soy.
They're all, they're all...
They're all, 'cause that's how they get the water.
That's how they get the, all the moisture out of the air.
Right.
Because of the four eyes. It's kind of frowned upon to put petroleum-based, oil-based on the road.
Then put water once a day, at the, at the busiest time, you're gonna have kids dead otherwise. And I'm sorry, I had to start seeing pulmonologists, it's impossible to live there, I can't use my deck, I can't mow my lawn, I have to wear safety masks. It's bad, and it's, it's not even... You haven't even put it out for bids or ideas, according to the city hall, and it's like, okay, this is something, if I was in the new development, I'd be really ticked, 'cause they were promised it. I was never told about it till, you know, afterwards, but anyway, I thank you for your time.
Yep.
Thanks.
What, how doable is it to put water on it regularly? Is that even a possibility?
Water trucks always possible, we use water trucks, but on my projects, um, the buildings, water trucks go by every time, the evaporation of the wood, they spend it on, and I can tell you that it's like a band-aid on something, but I believe we'd have a project for it, correct?
Right.
What should we do with the interrupts, is what...
Yeah, it's kind of a coming project, is it to go out to actually design it, or to put bids out?
So we have our plans, they're right here. We're working on right-of-way acquisition and other things, there's another, if you want to move to here.
Well, I apologize for taking your time, thank you.
No, that's fine.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, anybody got anything else you wanna chat about? Yep.
Um, on Wall Avenue, I live on a hundred and six down here, the gentleman that was here asking about gravel, if he's on the former of a hundred and twelve and seventeen, he's not in the city. So that's just the point, I don't know why he'd get gravel on his road, it's like city tax, he doesn't pay city tax, so I just thought to bring that up.
Well, it's a hundred and twelfth avenue, though, it's not on his road, right? We're talking a hundred and twelfth avenue.
If you jump past that, it's the city.
It's that side of the street, is it?
Yeah, if I was a few houses down, I would be in the city, but lucky. Thank you.
We can double-check that, Jim, just to see.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody got anything else?
One's going twice.
Okay, let's move, let's get a sheriff's report, they're gonna come next, unless you wanna...
They will be here at the next meeting, they're unable to do it.
Yeah, they did send along a sheet with all the updates on it, they'll move that the next time. Okay, Brenton?
The next item here, the... Probably one of the most interesting items we have in the good old reports, presented at the last meeting, Dylan Brown from Stan Dect did, Dylan was unable to do it tonight. However, with this policy, I had to draft, the council, if you could see it, since that presentation, at the last city council meeting, school district expressed quite a few concerns to the city. We go to the mayor, and also Mr. Joe and I did meet with representatives from the school district to discuss their concerns, their main concerns were tied to the load factoring section of this policy. All not really concerned about any other section, during the meeting that they brought up, said it was just a little factoring, here, page twenty of that document. It identifies previous version that was presented to council at the last meeting, identify single family as a lower grade, one per parcel, multifamily, one per parcel, public, so parks or city-owned property, one per parcel. Churches, a twenty-five per acre, schools, a forty-five per acre, industrial, twenty-five per acre, commercial, a fifteen per acre. During that discussion, school was very concerned about forty-five per acre, through discussions with them, it was proper to where we bring forward to council consideration of some, some revised load ratings, still have, or load factoring, they still have load factoring, basically means different uses. The, be weighted heavier for a, for a district, for a project, this is really identified just for the streets, the water sewer use factoring did not change, other than for public parks, um, state property, instead of per unit or parcel, it changed to per acre. So anyways, we're looking at just the street section there, with this proposal, it still has a little factor, like I said, it brings down commercial industrial schools, churches, um, churches, schools, industrial down to fifteen per acre, commercial twenty-five per acre. It does bring up public five per acre, instead of one parcel, per parcel, so that example would be, probably was before, it is a park, take like Mellett Park, for example, or Hoster. With what was shown at the last meeting, that one per, from per parcel, they would have been relatively the same as what else. So this is a calling for a little rate, 'cause we know parks do generate some traffic, depends on the park, what they build, but they do generate some traffic, like City Hall, even where our current location is, where we're at, do generate more traffic than individual houses. So that's where I'm looking from, and then the single family, multifamily, I'm not sure they're trying to look at jurisdictions. So it's the proposal, yeah. The Jeff and Cory, touch base on that discussion more deeper, but there was still, there's still a change that we have, that was...
Relaxing. So we had a spreadsheet that Dylan put that one together?
Yeah.
The spreadsheet, kinda gave us... Yep, hypothetical projects, and then hypothetical, so what would happen, yes, type of thing, and so we spent Thursday, bombing them before that, but we kind of spent Thursday kinda going over that with the school district, to kinda give them an idea. I think it was sixty-sixth street is what we used for an example on that one, um, where these would land, if, type of thing, and of course, this is all gonna be varied upon, so in the area that is in the special assessment district, what is involved in that, or if there're gonna be some industry in there, there's gonna be some commercial. So if you have a school area, residential, you're probably not gonna have industrial or commercial right in that special assessment area, so that's a chance to look at who's gonna be involved in it. So, yes, we went through multiple scenarios with this school district, to kinda show them what, what we're dealing with, and this is where we kinda, we adjusted some of these numbers a little bit based upon their concerns, our concerns. You know, what the residents would be working with, and then what the school, and for that matter, the commercial, 'cause you wanna attract commercial down here as well, the same thing with industrial, we don't wanna sit and overdo it there either, so that we're not in line with what some of the other, other cities are proposing with their stuff. So, and we were there for like about an hour and a half, a little over a half, twenty minutes, just kinda going over, just doing all the different scenarios. And this seemed to be, I would say, the best outcome that we could come up with, that, for everybody. Optimum, no, I could say it's the optimum, but this is something that school, when we got done talking about this, this is something that they said would be okay with them, they'd be all... So, that's kinda where the discussions went, you know, Jeff, am I missing, I had butted out a little bit for a couple things, there's something, I missed some of the conversation, but that was just a...
And this will vary by project, so, by the special assessment district, to, it varies based upon the type of land, what it's zoned for inside the district, and, yeah, every, every single project's gonna be different. But it should all fall into this standard breakdown here, of how much is getting charged per unit. Is that accurate?
Yep, and this policy does give special assessing commission, that you'd still...
Yep.
To adjust, recommend assessments, but this gives you a general idea of a starting place.
Was where you start.
Assessing commission, they're gonna look at situations, that, there, there might be an anomaly or something, or some, a situation where, I'll, I'll take like a school, for example, where there may be a project, that they're surrounded by residential, they have locations, they have a location, they're on their residential, we have a project happen, and that load factory, it hits the school hard, that's gonna be... That's gonna be something special assessment commission has to look at, okay, does this, is this feasible, does this make sense or not? Then they make their recommendation to the council, the council, they, they, they have to see it, makes sense to them, or if there's adjustments to occur. But generally, the policy is gonna get the vast majority of the properties, address them. Very common this. If you have, say like property at a school, or does it have a commercial in the area? Yeah, they're gonna end up carrying more burden, it's possible. Or other uses like church or industrial or all these things.
And this is where the special assessments committee's gonna have some latitude to be able to work with that, knowing the different scenarios and things like that too. But this is again the guide, and this is where you can do starting points.
I have some a couple kinda maybe dumb questions. I'm not working on this really with you guys, so I'm not uber familiar with this. But for the schools, like they don't pay taxes, can they be special assessed for any projects, or is this just the initial?
They can be assessed for any project, but they, for districts that they are from.
And these breakdowns, are they pertinent to new construction, new developments, or just?
Maybe special.
Maybe special, yeah, okay.
So it's not explicit.
Yeah, there's no distinction.
New construction, or if it's any special assessment project. And the slow factories like you see. Yeah, one could pull up for water sewer, they've not really been service tied to that, like it was being in the street. Factor, uh, where you probably see this, the most substantial is gonna be, yeah, the project has a little more impact. Fall out of number sixty-sixth street, there are two there on our radar right now, so you have more impact.
So, I have a couple of questions here. I almost don't know where to start, so I'm just gonna pick a point. That the street factor is pretty much the predominant factor for how this is driven. Explain to me, how is the school, is going to have a same street use factor as church or an industrial site? Because I can tell you that school buses run daily, multiple times a day. Industrial site, yes, we may or may not have trucks, but church certainly doesn't have that. Right, so while I realize this is a prospect, I'm gonna tell you that I think there are risks and something with that aspect. Number two. We started at a use factor seventy-five, if I'm, if my notes are right from previous meetings, right? So it seemed to kinda discuss that, and then we went down to forty-five because we wanted to create some fairness, some transparency and things like that. I mean, a lot of people have really put a lot of effort into the special assessment policy, right? And we were really in somewhere, and I, I feel like we kinda are taking a step back here. And so, um, the reason I say that is because at this point in time, we had a plan in the last draft, which was for the schools to have a forty-five factor, right? That was well lower than seventy-five, still higher than some of the others. So I get it, right, we, we wanna be a proponent for the schools. I think the West Park those schools are a huge driving factor in for us. I live in a neighborhood that is, development is being driven around because of the schools. I think we need to take care of our kids and we provide them a good education, don't get me wrong. But this, I think, is them dictating for us. And so, after we lowered it, they come back and say, well, we wanna negotiate. And we say, okay, well, this is where we need to be, or what's fair, or a whole bunch of that. And I don't know the process because I wasn't there, but this methodology took a lot of that into account. So I listened to Dylan and his presentations long before last, at his meeting. And I listened to how he came up with this methodology, and it was actually very similar to several other districts, right? So it, it really kinda bubble the blank queue. For some reason or another, we're back to not following our own counseling and our own consolation, but kind of letting the development drive some. So I, I'm not against that, in certain instances, there's plus and minuses to that. But I will say that in the past, West Park those schools, especially with these two least schools here, the middle school, high school, came to us and asked for some special concessions, right? So they asked for, oh, we want you guys to take off our water meter use charges for our students. And, you know, there was a couple of other things that had come through, but there were, there were some things that they just said, where's the district? We don't believe, we should have to pay for this, right? So we did, we, we worked with them because we work with good neighbors and we wanna host the schools, right? And so we said, okay, we're willing to work with you, we're gonna waive the use charges, we're gonna do these things, and we did. And now they're coming back saying, well, it's not good enough, we all think we have to pay our fair share, so we think we should drop this, and oh, by the way, if we drop it, you're gonna have to spread it out everywhere else, right? So, and, and that's how this works, because if we adjust one category, we have to adjust the other categories, right? So some other people went up and some other people went down, and then we get what we do this business, right? So I'm struggling a little because the schools are not built to max capacity, right? So the, the middle school and the high school are only built to a certain number, but yet they have capacity to add on to those schools, if I read the news articles, right? Where there's only gonna be seven hundred kids in one, but the max capacity can be twelve hundred, and they can add on up to fifteen hundred or something. And so my understanding, and please correct me if I'm wrong, is that we are not able to go back and add additional assessments to them if they choose to do that in the future, right?
If they don't go back, um, the special assessment district can say, oh, we're gonna reallocate this in school. Certified specialists.
Certified specialists and you're done, okay. So, um, my general thought process, and I can't really detail it in this, I'm going to, because I think I've made some. My general thought process is, you know, I thought forty-five was for schools, that's fine. They came back and said, all right, let's negotiate this where you need to be. And so we're there. But a negotiation is about one group or the other, right? It's about two groups coming to a general consensus. And that's what we need to do as a city and as a school district. I think that there's somewhere in between five and fifty, that is probably a little more fair. I don't disagree with adjusting commercial down a little bit, certainly wanted to see the single family and multi-family residential come down because all of this is development driven and it's getting our people working hard in our from things that weren't there when they moved in, right? And, and they're getting some benefit from amenities, so people are a little bit, a little. But at the same token, I think that we really need to take another look. And I'm not comfortable at fifty. I know the school district isn't comfortable with fifty. My understanding is they're not comfortable at much over fifty. But if they want to be a good neighbor in our area, and they want us to continue to consider some of these special requests, they're going to need to meet somewhere in the middle. And I feel that's fair enough.
I actually am looking at this and I'm a little frustrated over some of these. Especially after having a last forum and facing all of the community that we established and we want them, and we have been continuing with them. Um, I find it just a problem. And first and foremost, I care about what happens with the residents of this community. And, and I'm sorry, but I feel like the West Park of the district as a whole, they should be taking a lot of that class. When it comes to the driving of the development, I don't think that that's fair for our residents. Add a little bit to their part, when West Park is open itself should be.
I'd just like to see what I call to their, and I'm not saying that they're not, because they did take on a, a really significant chunk on the state schools, which is why they said, hey, this is a little more than, there, we're, we're somewhere in the middle. Yep, we can work somewhere in the middle, and I'm open to working some.
Yeah, I.
Unless they're willing to provide some massive benefit to our community, above and beyond, um, just providing the school, if they wanna assist with some other things. Talk, you know, and we're open to negotiations, that's what this is, a negotiation. But I'm not gonna go down this far at a, at a first glance, at a, at a first draft.
Yeah, it does seem like historically, you know, whatever we do give them is never enough. Um, and the commercial, you know, they're our biggest tax base, you know, that's who we want, that's who pays the bills. The commercial and the industrial. So, you know, I'm, like I said, I haven't been a big part of this, but I, I do tend to agree with what Sarah's talking about.
Yeah, I appreciate that this is a starting point for the special assessment commission to put their set of eyes and make the. But I don't think we start with this.
So where would you be comfortable?
I'd have to look at the actual numbers. I think that there is less.
They take like sixty-six, for example, if exactly. Last draft, we're on seven hundred and fifty thousand.
I thought I saw them.
With that scenario, like the residential lot was around sixteen, seventeen hundred. And sixty-six, if this scenario here, school say, so actually, and also important to this part, that acres of parkland that they have, just all that school say, sixty-six project. With the previous scenario, that would have been sixteen hundred, seventeen hundred, also just residential parcel.
Yep.
But this scenario, school around four hundred and forty thousand. The park district laying down ten acres, be around under, just under a hundred and sixty thousand, residential lot would be just under three thousand. With that scenario, like what you see, and that's based on the engineer, sixty-sixth street right now. So we're looking at scenarios there.
So that makes the park definitely want to, because that's, um, non-residential, sorry. You know, um, we need to make an adjustment there. I think that, you said four, four hundred thousand and seventy-five thousand?
So the school with the previous one, where their low factoring previously was at forty-five. Commercial at fifty, industrial twenty-five, twenty-five, I'll look what it's at, one, straight up, just one per parcel. Schools are also around seven hundred and fifty thousand, she read from me, but I had the other one, so they would now, around three hundred thousand.
I'm, I'm just curious, both the differences. In the schools, the industrial idea. As far as I'm concerned, and in all of my history of construction, schools have been a commercial in. So commercial is a little five, or a reasonable school close to that. And, and again, I'm not the expert, I, I don't do the methodology, I'm just telling you, if I have to do a reasonable comparison here. That is more like what I've heard. Did the school give any indication of going to deal with it?
School kept bringing up, uh, the original methodology that we used, uh, prior to this. They, um.
A French methodology or a square?
The very first draft that we had looked at gross floor area.
Gross floor area.
And what made that difficult, why we went to per acre is because you have to predict how big a building is going to be.
Yeah.
Or what's on like a bill. So.
Yeah, if a building doesn't exist, it's hard to say, this is how much it's going to be.
And that was after, you know, public, public game, feedback and everything, so no, we needed to switch from the gross, gross floor area to units per acre approach. That way, density, the derivative over time, that's more, more derivative density, like how dense your buildings are, for how, how much square weight. So if you're looking at that, it's not the best method.
I agree, it's not the best method, so why are they comparing this to that, because it happens a lot.
We kept that and steering it back.
Doing worse times.
On units per acre.
There in neighborhood, we need to, of course, we want to entertain them, negotiations on a fair scale, or if they. There comes a point in time where we have to say no. And I'm putting my foot down and saying, no, it's enough. We are in a, we do support, we want school in our community, but not it's like to cost everyone else.
And I think that's what they were implying to a couple of times, that if we got too high of that, that they would, they would go to their school and tell them.
I think, you know, honestly, I love the idea. Even schools, they're very nice. And it's coming because those schools, right? But in the same token, even if this, how many more schools are. Do this. Have to, I mean, I hope they have a nice entry. Have what our little. This big number, if you know, I can solve, they have the land, have a nice open area, that people think we have openly commercial and industrial stuff. I mean, we've got a big plan in place, and I believe that by us appointing this, but still being willing to negotiate with them, and they have that they don't person that.
All right, so what do you guys wanna do, you wanna table us and have another meeting with those part of schools?
Absolutely, I, honestly, I, I have no problem with the rest of this particular policy. The policy itself is fairly good in my view, and there's, but like you said, this is a starting point, right?
It's sounding pretty, Sarah, I don't wanna come, whole lot, but if concerns are with the school, like, um, if you have a number that you're not uncomfortable with, you have to do discussions, but it allows us to be able, if we are good with the policy, still to report there. Cause we do have assessment districts that.
That need this policy.
That will need this policy. If that's our holdup, but I, I don't want, like I said, I don't want to complicate a lot, it's just the if that's the only one that you're seeing change.
Well, some, some of the others may have to adjust one way or the other, but I can tell you that I'm not comfortable making that.
If you see others changing, or have the potential change, and I'd say just table it, um, or determine what you're comfortable with, I break out.
Well, cause remember now, when we sat and did this on last Thursday, when we made any changes, we did a proportional change to school, industrial, commercial.
Correct, we tried to keep it proportional right now.
Proportional, so if we make mods now, there'll be some proportional.
The school was adjusted a little bit more than proportional.
Yeah.
And the reasoning behind that is, so we went from seventy to forty-five. What Falters did is they reviewed all the schools in West Park, to see what was built out, like how much of their property was built out. Or determined, okay, X amount built out, and the rest was green space. So they took off the green space portion, and that's what got them to forty-five.
That's fair.
So then, going from forty-five, forty-five, the school is saying, we're not as dense as like a typical urban school. So they're located in urban schools, and that's why they cut out green space, saying, we're not as dense as a urban school. That's why you had the adjustment, so you see now. Saying, we're not as dense as a urban school. That's why you had the adjustment. So you see now, we're in down and trying to work with the school.
So that, that's.
So that, that is the logic behind it.
Yeah.
Um.
That methodology makes sense, but we're also not rural districted.
Yep.
And we're growing, and we need to account for that. So while I agree, we're not a rural district at forty-five, right? And we're not nearly at the capacity of a, of, of, two, three, seven, either seventy-five, whatever it was. I think there's a happy beginning, there's some opportunity. We are not rural. I believe that that is a completely low, 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 low score. So I think we look at. And I'm not prepared to make that call. And I don't know if the rest of the council is comfortable going somewhere in between the fifteen thousand. At this point in time, I would, I would propose something similar to commercial at twenty-five. I think that that is more than fair.
Definitely.
Are you taking any public comments?
Not on this one, no.
Okay.
Um. Plus I was thinking, Brett, should we just, uh, if we wanted to, we could have another discussion on this one. I mean, we kinda went through this thing on Thursday, we did the ups and downs. But.
I, I'm, I'm open with us. I think we've come a long way. I think the people in our community are going to be. How things are consistent, they're more development driven, really good guideline here. This has taken quite a bit of time, but it's really something that's come together. And if this is the living room argument, I would make. So that other people will be taking advantage. And, and we just don't know what the, uh, what the ins and outs are that legal, legal wise, but is there a possibility that we get a special assessment policy? And depending, this, so that some of the things in this, can we? Or work, I, I don't know.
This policy is up to you when you.
Yeah, the policy will change.
There's no, yeah, there's no public hearing process or anything required, like engage the public in this policy at some point. If that's your desire, but it's something that you guys can approve or amend if you can.
This isn't an emergency.
Yeah, you know, this is the city's policy. It isn't anything else. It's the city's, it's the council's. Whatever we have for load factors, the council wants to change it, change it. So if you wanna say, schools are going to be at this amount, that's the city's policy. You have to stand, stand by your policy. That's what I'm saying. If you're gonna push for it to be this or different. Just remember, you gotta stand by your policy. So whatever you have in there, if you're in support, you're standing by. That's, at the end of the day, that's really what matters. If you're gonna stand by that policy. Question you have for council. Can we have another discussion of school, just guess who you? Would it be much, it may, it may not. Where you mentioned.
Well, can we bring up all of these other things that Sarah and I. Have worked with. With ABC.
In, in a lot of these points, we're, we're discussed. And we can bring it up, yeah, or we can. Here, like I said, it's the city's policy. So if you want us to have a meeting, we can have another meeting with them, and if you'd like us to do that, we can. Especially, like I said, I was stressing. It isn't three, one, and two, eight. You gotta do it this way. Uh, what you see here is from, outcome from that meeting where. Trying to find a way to work with that, that group.
Trying to find a way to work with that, when they're saying, you have to get down to this level or else.
And.
That's not working together.
That's, and that's up to the city council here to decide what you want to do on this call. If you're willing to go back and say, hey. We go back to them if you want to, or we can just.
Well, yeah, is it really?
Staff pretty valid. You, I, that's what I'm saying, if you don't.
Do we have to do that? Do we have?
You don't have to go back if you don't want to.
No, you guys, if we wanna change the numbers here, we can do that and enact what we've got and go from there. If that's what you.
Well, you're at the meeting, what do you think?
This is where we landed on.
So you like that?
I'm okay with it. Do I like it? Is it optimum? No. But this is something that we landed on in conversation.
Okay, then you just said, stand by your policy. But if you don't like it, and you're just standing by it because.
Compromise.
But we compromise.
Is it compromise, or are they just kind of?
We're the only ones compromising.
Well, okay, but we don't, okay, but you have this every once in a while, you sit and have, have conversations with people, and you do have to sit and realize where you're at with things. Yeah, we can sit and argue with them. Yep, but we can do that, just like we've been doing for the last year and a half, maybe two, every time we have another special assessment thing, they're always here, we're always having conversations, and they're in our app.
Okay, in the forum, they talked about West Fargo going something similar to what we're doing. But it's okay for West Fargo to do that, but it's not okay for us. I would like to know, well, that's what Fargo Forum said. So I'm curious to know, like, I'm sorry, West Fargo School District, um, the, in the forum, it said, if I said, well, West Fargo School District and West Fargo, they're gonna be kind of arguing the same kind of thing as us. But it's gonna be okay with them and not with us. I don't understand that.
Well, what I, what I don't understand. Take X amount of dollars. The word not. And have an issue with it, but you have an issue here.
That's the hard thing, is like, it just seems like they have this chip on their shoulder for us.
And it's not something that I.
And so why are, why are we catering to them then? I mean, do we really need to? I don't know.
No.
I guess, yeah, if you're looking at, should be about the same as commercial, like you say, maybe fifteen to twenty-five.
James, that fifteen to twenty-five.
I mean, that's, that's something you could do, or you could say it could be a twenty, or.
Yep.
You know, if, if you have.
Oh, I was comfortable with twenty.
Are, are we?
Um, if you're looking at the numbers. No, no, we're not. So, I, I, I do think it really helped to look at that spreadsheet, to watch the numbers adjust as you would. Um, try to keep this in mind. Now, when we were trying to make sure that the ratios stayed similar for schools, industrial, and commercial. Um, the problem with that is when you keep that ratio the same, uh, single family set as a one, it didn't matter that much when you kept fluctuating those, those numbers, if you kept that ratio the same. Those three would get hit very similar. They would come down a little bit each time, but they'd still be very similar as far as how hard they were getting hit. Um, I do think it would, if, if you haven't had a chance to look at that spreadsheet, uh, and.
I've seen it.
Okay, uh, and just play around with those numbers, just to figure out, okay, what, what is it that we would need, and what is it that they would need? So that's where we're trying to figure out, okay, what is it that we would need as far as a road project? So this is just for roads. Um, everything else is pretty much agreed upon, everything else. This is only for roads and larger roads.
Would we have approved the Christianson Boulevard concrete road if there was not a plan for a future school?
If there was not a plan?
Because my biggest factor in voting for that road, in removing that, was the fact that there was a school there, and making that concrete was because there was going to be bus traffic.
Totally understood.
Mm-hmm.
Yep, totally agree with your point.
That's who, we all were with that.
That's exactly right. So that being said, I'm looking at this going. Now, do we need to go back up to forty-five? No, we know there's an issue. Do we meet somewhere in the middle? I think we can be very neighborly about this. And they may have a problem with it, and I'm very sorry for them if they're gonna have a problem. Did we also give them some money?
There is, uh. So chatting with the developers, the developer all the week here, they purchased the land from the developer for a thousand dollars, ten acres. Then that city allowed part of that ten acre purchase, four acres of it to be considered dedication.
Dedication.
Which city. So, that ten acres, they, they bought ten acres, but they brought their grace down. Certainly there.
You, you see that, that answer that's out, that keeps saying, give me more, give me more. We've already given them a plan, we've already made concessions, I.
So what, like again, what would you, what would you like to do? Do you wanna weigh?
This part and just get the calculator thing and figure it out.
Either one of it, except, I can pull up, we can pull up a calculator and submit to if you wanted to see that, or if you could, whatever you wanna do.
But let's get this done.
I would just like to say, like, these, these two that were at the meeting, uh, said they were comfortable with twenty, so that's, I guess, where I would be at as well.
I, I can go with twenty.
I think it should be.
And I don't disagree with that. I just, these two are there, so I, I was kinda, I just feel more respectful to.
I just, and I was, I'm not trying to dismiss their. But I feel like this is more dictating and taking advantage and, and. Are willing to work with us, very happily.
Okay, so I'll just ask this then, are you guys okay with them not building another school or what?
Yes.
Okay, that's all I wanted. Okay, go ahead and turn some numbers.
We have a beautiful school here, and I would love for them, I would love for them to build a school, but if, if we're arguing the overall difference, I, I mean, what's the difference between twenty-five, a hundred thousand dollars, eighty thousand?
Well, yeah, it seems like if they don't build another school here, from just all the conversations that I've heard, it's strictly because they're, um, they have a chip on their shoulder. I mean, when they had staff turnover with the whole high school and middle school, I mean, we were working well together until that. And then all these problems arose that were not really brought to our attention until then. So, I mean, we've all, we've done really, you know, what we can, it seems like. I, I'm not in all the conversations, but I mean. Yeah, it just seems impossible to really.
And, and there are, after, you have a stare on his face that weren't privy to any of those pretty. And so, they've had meeting, one meeting with us, um, all of us as the council, asking us to be near the meeting. We have, we've done our part. We did the land, we made concessions, we've done everything we can to then go for it. And I don't think that we're asking for. So let's look at the difference.
So this is a hypothetical project. It is pretty easy math, or as easy as you can get. It's a good project, costs, say, you know, it's. It's broken out, people leave force of the fourth bit, went to our single family lots.
Alright.
Just trying to get to where you see.
I'm sorry.
Anyways, the fourth makes up single family lots, fourth commercial, fourth industrial. School, did this hypothetical project. We did pick up girls' floor area. See here with this model, it showed for a million dollar project. Residential would have been just under fifty thousand, commercial at five hundred and sixty-one thousand. Hundred and sixty-seven thousand, seven hundred and twenty-two. Look at that going. We talked about some of the flaws or choose with gross floor area. So, after we had our public meeting to get public input about the policy, we went to. An acre, this example, this is where our previous policy was, or one previous. Seventy per acre, per acre. Residential was a load factor of one. Brought down even more, down to twenty-five thousand. This is, so a million dollar project, residential properties will be responsible for twenty-five thousand. That's like a great deal. However, the other type of uses we had to be heavier, commercial was at three hundred and seventy-seven thousand, industrial at fifty-seven thousand. You see a load factor here, like commercial is at sixty, industrial is twenty-five. Schools at seventy, and then load. After that, now, that's when we've talked. The shit evolved, um, their concern at the seventy per acre. Seventy per acre, that's when we consulted with that green space versus use, that's where it got down to the forty-five. By example, hypothetical, every project is totally different. However, with this one, uh, residential. Created as a one, down to thirty-two thousand. Broke commercial down by ten, in addition to the change for the school also, commercial was down to a fifty. Four hundred, just over four hundred thousand. Industrial up to two, two hundred one thousand. School at three hundred and sixty-two thousand. And had the load factor to forty-five. That's, I was worried that occurred there. This one here, I can show you any numbers that you would like to see, based on that potential breakout, if you see what it was. So, what you see in here. Back in three. Five. Commercial, eight. And I go, it's cool. That's what you have. So residential gets up to a hundred and seventy-nine. But, I'll take an example, like a lot of these projects where you have the street factor, where the regional street. Like sixty-six or Wall, for example, is that type of projects from talking, right? It, it could be other ones, but the biggest concern, the biggest dollars. Um, commercials, three seventy-three. Industrial, two twenty-three. And school, two twenty-three.
So in there, I wanna point out that for the residential, um, if you go back up to that, um, there's three hundred and twenty units, or three hundred and twenty residential houses there that combine into that hundred and seventy-nine thousand. So each individual house would be five fifty-nine. Right there, I can't read that number.
Five fifty-nine.
Yep.
Yeah.
For a million dollar project.
Yep.
I'm just comparing that with that in my head, really, it really not.
So when you're looking at the eight million.
For the schools, that's the body health.
And that, this is all hypothetical, this one is a little more real, the project is sixty-six street. Plus, it is a real project. But we use this as a conversation view, to be able to see how this load factor.
So let's make the change.
Go down, go, scroll down.
If I did some, let me know. If I put a twenty-five here. They go. Three twenty-four.
Go to twenty-two, so wait a minute, let me fix that number. Four.
Six seventy-five.
Five.
Three two, okay?
Three two seventy-seven, so.
Forty-six thousand. The school is, it's gonna fill about how many million dollars?
Not being familiar with this, right? Knowing your project is very different.
Right, and you're, you're not gonna have the same number of residential units in each project, or commercial units, um, it, it all depends on the project itself.
And it was part of the special assessment.
We can, they're gonna be spreading everything. I mean, I feel like.
They're asking us to struggle.
To Forest.
Three thousand and twelve.
It's just that it's not.
Well, yeah, Forest pays for all the other schools, we have for, since.
No, I'm sorry, I'm not any of that, any of that.
Listen, we wanted to bring this to you, for your discussion, we want to have a key discussion on this.
Hey, well, I think.
How many people are? Sixty-seven to me, I'm sure that.
We're an A.
Of course.
Forty, versus how many in Forest? What was our last?
Forest, uh, all park were probably around forty-two hundred people, census.
Forty-two hundred versus forty-two thousand.
Well, I think West Fargo's getting a heck of a deal.
Yep, that's a.
Okay, well, I'm sorry.
So what do you guys wanna do? Should we?
I'm, I'm so.
Want to table it?
Yeah, cause I'm not, I don't want to be, maybe Sarah. I'm pending.
Yeah, let's, let's wait until after the election and then talk. Yeah, let's wait until after the election and then talk. Get some, break your cannons and.
I mean, honestly, it's kind of. It's just a party, but they're gonna spread that out over all of West Fargo, and then we have this little tiny community, and we're just supposed to be like, here you go, Forrest, here's the waters. Pay for it.
So, yeah, start to us a little bit, just there. What would happen? Your mind is based on. And Jeff, please, you wrote the name, please.
Well, probably the worst-case scenario with this one would be that they probably wouldn't build another one. Forest, or they could find some more turf than West Fargo's probably. Just because they would think that the specials would be more. Okay, so that would probably be the worst thing. That might be. I don't know if they were going more than that, but it's just that they wouldn't. Didn't grow outside.
Well, I think the key is these small kids that are riding their bikes, that don't have a choice, but they have to ride their bikes, or. I mean, if the school is further, I guess, they should have buses, if you're within a mile, yeah, yeah. So they'd have buses, I guess.
My daughter has a bus from our house to the middle school.
Yeah, so I mean, then it's just gonna cost them more bus, and they don't have bus drivers, so.
What you could, what you could be facing though, too, be having fewer schools here, where they have the buses, them to drive their kids to school. Could have challenges to try. You know, what could be, the community could see as.
Well, then, basically, they're gonna have to build this school. So what's, I think, if they're being forced into it, then.
Well, I think as long as we feel like we're doing what we can, we can do to protect ourselves, then that's what we have to do. I mean, if they decide that we're being unreasonable, I mean, I guess that's up to them, but, you know, if we're just, like Sarah said, bending over.
Sorry. I'm sorry to come across.
I mean, we have to be able to feel comfortable with it, too, so.
Jeff, do you need any parting comments?
I got a question for Chris. You guys are into the understanding that there was going to be a school there, is that correct, for all those homes?
Correct.
All right, I just want to make sure of that. Obviously, there's. And I'm trying to find the right way to word this. There is the impression that we, doing this special assessment policy, are outside of what West Fargo does, okay? They, it was rumored that West Fargo was going to do something similar that has been tabled. I don't know if it had to do with the elections coming up, or if it had to do with getting a school built in West Fargo. I don't know if they would stop putting a school there, and what, you know, what that would impact the city of Forest, or how it would impact the city of Forest. Negatively or positively, I guess I'm not sure, but I know a lot of what you guys have done was to try to bring that school there. And I don't know if if us changing this would change that or not. I totally get them looking at the very first round of assessments and saying, hey, it's a lot more than what, you know, what you guys are currently proposing, it's a lot more than what you, you know, gave us the first time around kind of thing, or what you were using for the methodology the first time around. And I'm trying to find a way, how do you, how do you convince them otherwise, that, you know what? That first methodology was wrong. You can't really properly assess something if there's no building there, you don't know what's going to be on a future piece of land. So, I realize, no matter whatever action we take here, could impact them, I'm just trying to figure out. Now, obviously, your multiple developments had something in mind for that, and I'm not trying to kid you guys, I'm just saying that there is a broader impact on this decision. Even more so for, well, the residents, if we increase the load factoring for a single-family home. I know the mayor was comfortable at it, too. Just to bring up a little bit, like I said, if, in all those projections that we were doing with that Excel spreadsheet, if you kept the ratios the same, it didn't really modify things to their liking. And that's where I'm having a hard time, I'm not trying to, you know, figure out, okay, what is, what is the right thing to do?
When you guys met, did you discuss how much they paid for that school in Rocky Horse?
Yes, we did, yep.
And what did they say about that?
It was an anomaly of one-time thing.
Oh, okay.
There's another example where it's bad.
I mean, they're gonna spend more money moving to a different piece of land. So it would, I mean, from the sounds of it, it seems like they would.
Right, and this piece of land, even including the specials, would have ended up cheaper than the piece of land in Rocky Horse. So, it was hard to understand that, that logic, they said it was a one-time purchase, a one-time cost, one-time assessment. And it was a one-time cost, because they just assumed that West Fargo was going to keep the same factoring for their special assessments throughout the end of time.
I had a really nice discussion. I couldn't unfortunately get everywhere, um, several times. So, I walked over six miles toward the door and talked to a number of people. It was still for sale sign. Just as fast as you could take a stick, and workers there on Sunday didn't stop them. So, and I really don't think this school or. Back there. Their trend for the area because it is very. Quite often, we're very. Friends and family.
And I agree. All right, so what do you guys, on tables? Well, let's have to bring it back.
I might have to get my sleeping bag, if we're gonna talk about it.
No, I'd say we probably talked about, unless you guys have anything else to add on this, I think. So why don't, I don't know if we'll have enough time to get this back, 20th? Guess for right now, let's table it till the 20th, and let's see what happens. Because we don't know if we're gonna table.
I believe this will.
But, all right, we'll table it till 20th. All right, so let's move on to number nine. Lucas, you got this.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, what we have before these nine is a public hearing for the Chestnut Drive project. Publish the resolution of necessity for this project on April 27 and May 4. Protest period, this project was triggered by that first publication. Probably ever since 30 days from that publication to file with protest with the city auditor. I believe the city auditor gave you those three protests that I had in my folder, so that's how many there were. So, Mr. Mayor, the next step would be to open up a public hearing to hear those protests.
Good, we'll do that, we'll open up a public hearing on the protest for Chestnut Drive. Mr. 2022-10. What do you wanna? Comment? You have that opportunity to read the protests.
Yes.
Comments on them, then?
No.
There's.
There was, there was three protests here. While there are some very valid complaints in here, the folks are making some comments outside of, the personal comments are not. Project has been in here, correct? Thorpe, here, says, got to this, top of the bottom, okay.
We haven't, we gotta get. Buttons back, that's our three, yeah, Jeff.
Right.
As far as preliminary, yes, we're going through it for three, five years.
Good, so I want to make sure, because there's a couple others here, I just want to ask you. Will there be a crown slash hold on the series? And will it be adequate?
Be a minimum percent. We're looking at to make some, right, force that water to the edges, since we aren't influencing a monitor. There'll be a problem in the center of the road. Force water.
Is there any issues that can be remedied with fighting conflict instead of this project?
So we are going to know.
We are going to know, it's a misunderstanding. Streetlights, sidewalks, and other extra should be excluded. I recall that we excluded those items.
No streetlights, no sidelines.
Good, so we have met the majority of their requests. And then there's some concern about how it assessed and the cost of the project and the funding of the project. It's fair that they have to contribute. Always, because they'll have to contribute to them. And this policy will actually clarify a lot of that, right? Once we get to the final, the financial numbers, that should clarify our good policies, yes?
That's where the findings go. It will give the guidance of, in, I mean, major roles.
Good.
Like our chair of roles.
Okay.
That we didn't have.
There's a few other letters here, a lot of them are feeling as if they want to understand what they're coming from. They do better as far as transparency, but I, I took the role a couple months ago. Coming in, wanting with some of those residents, and they know what's coming, so that's good. And again, the final letter, it looks like, is concerned about same drainage. Is some of the drainage being addressed with this project?
Standing water on the street, yes. Not a lot with the street, as far as, spent a couple, a month ago, was standing water on the street. Pretty dressing. Don't think it's gonna be.
All I have is, do you want to have comments on these letters?
I thought the communication was really good on this. Like, didn't you meet with all the residents multiple times?
Yes, people that don't show up are some of the. I looked at the list, I looked back to the roster to speak.
You'll see that happens frequently. Okay, anything else on those guys, questions?
And just to reiterate, this project was, like, neighborhood-driven. I mean, we had so many complaints for the issues, that's why this is up.
It started as a public works project, and then it was, died basically due to cost. It was retooled with some public input from the residents. Got us to the.
Yeah, over the years, the four years that I've been on here, I've, those residents have been in a lot wanting this fixed.
Anything else, those are not post-public hearing.
So the next step, because there weren't sufficient protests for this project, we put the resolution determining insufficient protests, which is saying that the city desires to proceed.
Second. Chair makes a motion, Jeff, second. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Everybody?
And finally, Mr. Mayor, it's just a resolution directing the engineer to prepare the plans and specs for the project.
That's the next step, guys. Motion, Chelsea does a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, Lucas, you got the next one here.
Yes, so this next one, Mr. Mayor, is a petition was filed with the city to annex property to the west of Lost River Division, kind of in that area. So the petition was signed by Tom Samuelson as co-trustee of the Edward Samuelson Global Living Trust, and Jack Dwyer as president of Boavair Properties. And they kind of provided the petition to the city. It's what we have tonight, under the century code, if the property owners or the electors of three-fourths of a area want to be annexed into the city, they can file a petition with the city to be annexed. The city publishes a notice in the newspaper, one publication is required. Our office handled that. Letters regarding the annexation petition were sent to Southeast Cass, Cass County Joint, Cass County, and then Warren Township, for this annexation petition, all public entities that have somewhat of an interest in this. The Water Districts actually own property contained within this annexation petition, so they were notified. And I don't think they have any issues, I think there've been informal communications with them before, so they, they are aware that this annexation was being petitioned for. So the process tonight is to have a hearing on the annexation petition, and then after that, this annexation will be done via ordinance. So our office prepared an ordinance, which says, you know, it kind of lays all this information out, and provides map of the annexation area, and they'll have two readings of that, similar to any other ordinance that the city does. After the second reading, we'll have the mayor certify the map of the annexation area by signing basically this the flat map of this area, and then that gets reported to the Cass County Department Office. And after that, the annexations team.
Excuse me, so we'll open up a public hearing for the petition to annex. Guys have any questions on this? Anybody? Okay, Russ, go ahead.
How does it work then for extraterritorial? Extending or extraterritorial?
So the city has an ordinance, actually, that just says anytime the city annexes, its area just gets bumped out. That area will just be extended, and that's also why it provides notice to the township and to the county, letting them know that the city has this on its plate. And so that's actually, that ordinance is required by century code. And that way, the city doesn't have to continuously update its E P map.
Sure.
So it's kind of just down.
Yep, go ahead.
Yep, I was already buckled down, in charge of law office, here on behalf of the developers. Just kind of wanted to add to what Lucas was saying. I think it's, I believe it's being annexed with the intention of developing Lost River West, which is basically just a continuation of Lost River. So I think the understanding or discussions that the developers had with the city is just that over the next couple of years, services will be run across the Cheyenne diversion. So the petition for annexation is coming to you now, kind of ahead of time, ahead of the master plan of the flat application, so as to take on some of those wall avenue assessments. Not just volunteering as eggplant, but with, I guess, understanding or expectation that it'll be developed, and so it just kind of equally spreads out the cost of wall app to those future residents.
So are you guys planning to file for the paperwork to get the underground underneath the diversion? Because I suppose you gotta go through the court, don't you, to get some of that? It'll take a while, that's why I'm just.
Yes, yeah, sorry, I guess as far as timeline on that, I think it was kind of over the next few years, so like, thinking one to three years, not, not necessarily immediate or this year or anything, but over the next couple.
Because I know it'll take a while with those permits.
Yes, yeah, exactly, I guess just kind of gauging the city's, I guess, interest or expectation that that will get developed, allowing that to happen in the future. And that they're not just taking these assessments on as eggplant, annexed to the city. With no intention of allowing it to develop.
Yeah.
I believe the timeline is fair, we're not talking. We're certain to not talk of the next, the plan for some of that, it gives us time to inform. Plan for some of that. It gives us time to inform, create as necessary to. Quite likely, I, I, the, the lease petition to the city, I've seen. Very good, but not finalized. I've seen so far, there's this factoring. I appreciate the willingness. Um, where in this process does the traffic flow study? I mean, I don't know. I mean, in this annexation process, I mean, that planning and zoning, the traffic flow, or is that something that's looked at front or further down the road? Do you have to answer that one?
Typically it's done after, after it's done. That's due to that subdivision.
Okay, so I mean, is there any talk about what the traffic flow is going to look like? I mean, wall can. There was actually more than that would be. None of that has been submitted to the city yet. And so there was preliminary discussion about ideas. However, nothing final has gone through planning and zoning. Nothing final has gone through the city. What, what is up in the big cloud in the air is reasonable to me at this stage, being that it's so.
I think we need, um, is it eighty first? Or we need eighty first whether this development is in or not. We really need eighty first. So I think, you know, if, if that is part of this conversation.
It is.
Um, you know, and then having this land to help pay for wall and pay for eighty first, I think is, is important. So hopefully, you know, we've, we've all learned from past mistakes and we'll get this one right.
Yeah. I have some confidence that there are some plans in place.
I mean, while even, while even paved can't stand that traffic.
Right, so, right. Thank you. We, we actually discussed three. I'm not at liberty to discuss in detail on that right now. However, as it develops, it will. Thank you.
All right, anything else on this one? I'm gonna close the public hearing on this. Do you guys have any other questions to, to ask? This one, this is pretty much a cut and dry deal, so. I'll look for a motion to accept the first reading.
I will take the motion to accept the first reading.
Chair makes a motion.
Second.
Right, all in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, passed. So Lucas, the second reading then, we'll have that.
At your next meeting.
Meeting, okay, I didn't know if there was enough time there.
And we'll have that plot now, ready, see when you sign that and get it.
Perfect. Thank you, sir. All right, Jimmy, you got eleven.
All right. Water Source Storm was here to approve the district twenty twenty-two dash eight sixty-six street. A public input meeting was held on Thursday, May nineteenth with the Horace Carter Events Center. Approximately twelve residents attended, all the presentation proposals of residents were from the Jason Addelman addition. And what I sent you about the summary of the presentation and what went through that is in the list of people who were there. Um, received written comments that were attached to the memo. Um, one was during the general loan property line at sixty-one, sixty-five, sixty-one, Lundy Avenue. Commercial property accessible patient to adjacent to Addelman Drive. And the Addelman request separation of the sixth street and Allen residence. Did receive one more comment after this was submitted. I will amend. Catch that. Basically, it's. These on property, um, these are the east and the west of the corridor. I've developed a group of projects. Find around these. Which is planned in the, um, red and white state. Had a look at how, helps I told. Those who were, where we're at. Um, as this comment was, there was a fence on sixty-six was concerned. I was brought up, um. This resident is in favor of that to prevent small children, fence from entering, instead of getting a traffic on the collector road and providing some privacy for the residents and. Was a little bit of discussion added before we gave a meeting about that. And the question got to be of what type of fence, green haze offense, case for fence, that kind of stuff. So it's just a comment that we've seen. Safety, drainage, of course. Uh, this project would be urban section, so we'd have storm sewer on it. We can extend storm sewer to the right away limits and be able to provide some relief to the Allen addition. Future with some additional storm sewer. Um, smaller stuff like Allen Drive. And moving the driveway from existing commercial property to, um. Uh, Allen. What's that, East West Street? That would be.
No, it's not Libya. It's the Allen Street. Yeah.
Is it Allen?
Allen and then Brittany is the back one.
Okay, off of what? Different street that is the concrete to asphalt, so. That was the summation. There wasn't a lot of comment, like I said, and they are attached to the, attached to the memo. Um, any comments on, any questions on the comments received, any questions on the public input?
I have a question on the, the commercial. What commercial are they talking about? What, what area?
The lot in the far southwest corner of Allen addition.
Red bar.
The red bar.
Is that the only commercial they were talking about?
Don't push them there. So if you have no comments on that, the second hand we have is for, is a proposal from Ron Intertech to do some geotechnical soil evaluation. During the public input meeting, the resident brought up that there was a lot of film placed in that corridor by previous business in that area. And, um, knowing how the soils are somewhat questionable up there to start with, if there's a bunch of fill material put a lot there, we better identify it sooner than later. So, uh, Ron Intertech has done work for us before. They're working, they've worked with us on Wall Avenue and some other ones. Uh, we have a proposal here, uh, for some soil borings. They would all be in the, let's see here, twelve wall samples, boring, uh, twelve standard penetration tests, eleven feet deep. Hopefully we don't need to go deeper than that, but we might extend one just to see what the, what the soils are like down there, considering that there is a river running underneath.
There is. We're also going to look at that is previously according to my comments with some of the. Parts of course, previously available.
Yeah. So. In the west acre.
Yes.
So, um, the proposal is more sixteen thousand two hundred and eighty-nine dollars, like I said, for soil boring and some geotechnical analysis as to what the surface conditions are. And with what we learned at the public meeting, it's. Big start to be almost there.
Is the soil similar to like where the school was built and go further north like that? Or do you kind of get away from the sand?
No, it pretty much runs right along.
It's about the same.
So that's where we go back to public input content and concrete.
Yeah, I know. I just wanted to learn more of that up there.
More of it, yeah. Is it worse or better? I think right now the water gets pretty high.
Yeah.
But, um, just to say when it comes.
I'd be curious when they get those samples back to see what, if you get down even eleven feet.
I don't think eleven feet is near far enough.
For a road project?
Yes, for your road project.
So.
My sump pump is running.
So you have high groundwater?
Yes, there's very high, high groundwater. My sump pump doesn't run.
You also realize we've gotten over ten plus inches here in the last sixty-five, seventy days too. So, I mean, yeah.
My sump pump doesn't run. No. My sump pump is running.
Russ is, is driving.
Russ, Russ is getting us the water.
Russ is getting it high.
So.
And there literally is a river that runs.
No, I didn't know.
Under there.
Yeah.
That well project, the well report you got for drilling wells in. That was my well that they hit water at nine feet.
It's true.
It wasn't.
The driest year too, last year.
That was, that was a dry year that they did that.
I remember they were out cord, getting, getting ready for the school too, although you'd have to go down very far before you were touching water.
So I mean, we're not really looking for groundwater. We're looking for what the opposition and what the hills are going on top of. So, um, I think we can extend a couple of these a little deeper, but. Eleven feet is, I don't like it too carried away, but I agree that probably should be a couple of them there.
What's the standard protocol for borings on roads?
Far as.
Like, do you normally, do you, do you normally get that?
Yeah, typically, yes, because you want, especially knowing that there's one fill there, two soils we've dug all around it. And it's just, it's, it's good information to the doctor to know.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, so like in this particular case, this is just standard.
Yeah.
I mean, we know there's still there, but this is all standard anyways.
We, we have been told there's still there. We try and figure out what there is.
I think they tell you there's still there, because I pulled a tree and tried to block that side of the lot.
So is it suitable material filled and rolled on? Is it not suitable? That's what we're trying to find out. Figure out what we need to put for the section, the pavement thickness, basicness. So. So we want to, so we, right now, we've got twelve, twelve borings along the corridor. Standard penetration boring, standard to depth of the water. So I think twelve is plenty. I think what I'll do is maybe lob off one, make a couple deeper.
Just to check.
That way to check, to try to keep it in the same dollar amount, so. But.
Anybody else got any questions? Otherwise I think we can. Really got an opposition here. I think we can accept this and.
I think a motion to accept the G O for favor.
Chelsea makes a motion. Can we get a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Case, you got cut creeps.
You guys have a son of yours got paper copies?
I'll take the paper copy. Always.
Stand to stack. It's a zoning exhibit, the master plan. Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'm with the council. Uh, the application before is a public hearing for rezoning planning of what is proposed coverage to second edition. Uh, the applicant proposing to rezone approximately one hundred fifty-eight acres from its current district classification of A into three zones, R six, R four, and public facilities. Uh, three zoning districts are compliant with the city's future land use map, which defines the area's compact development and suburban. Um, additionally, on top of the reason they propose a subdivide that one hundred fifty-eight acres into two hundred and thirty-seven residential blocks. Uh, following review of the application, staff does find that the project is designed, or as designed is compliant with the conference plan and the city's land use order. Um, on April twelve, the planning zoning commission voted to recommend approval of the application with a staff recommending condition of the applicant meet with city staff uh, to discuss the feasibility of adding a pedestrian access. Somewhere along the mid-block of what's proposed to be block five, which runs along drain twenty-seven. Um, we met with the applicant represented on May fifth to discuss the potential circulation that's planned for that area. Um, and following that meeting, staff will conclude that the addition of that mid-block access to drain twenty-seven with the inclusion of another crossing over drain twenty-seven, uh, just is not feasible at this time. And it doesn't appear to actually significantly shorten any pedestrian oriented roads either. Um, they're right now currently proposing, uh, crosses at eighty-third avenue south and eighty eighth. So you'll have it at both the north and south disdeveloped, so here. And then another one down here with internal pathways that kind of lead you out those ways already. Staff will recommend that the city council does approve the rezone and flat for concrete second as presented this evening. And if you have any questions, happy to try and.
I'll open up the public hearing on this, so we don't forget that, right?
Um, both are just one, five, nine, five results again.
Let's do it same time.
What was the reason for not getting the pedestrian over?
So right now we have, there's two pedestrian accesses. There's one. You can see one right here that brings you through there. And then another one that brings you out through this area. We thought potentially because there's significant park area along, on the opposite side of drain twenty-seven, that we should at least explore potential options of providing something mid-block, long block block. If kind of our conversations with them and the cost of adding an additional pedestrian crossing over drain twenty-seven and doing really a mid-block that really is going to serve a few of these residents, where a lot of them are going to come up to plan crossing on eighty-third and down to the park trail system. And then out potentially to eighty-eight, to the park trail system up through here. So there's a pathway in their future phases that will run the length of all this throughout, including projects up in here.
Say that again. There is a pathway that what?
So there's a pathway that runs the length of this park area in their future phases on this side that will connect to both eighty-third, eighty-eighth and eighty-third up here.
Okay.
So there's access.
So there's going to be.
Yeah. There'll be dual access on pretty much mid concrete condition along eighty-third and then along eighty-eighth with a pedestrian connection that will bring you through that park area.
What is the length of block?
So along block five, it exceeds the, the seven hundred or the twelve hundred with the T section that there is. But because of the natural feature of the drain twenty-seven per ordinance, it's allowed to exceed. That like because there is a, uh, geographic or geolong, geographic.
Those, um, east-west roads, I mean, should that, what is it? Can be more centered and then those east-west roads should go all the way to six feet.
Running in.
Well, because.
These are all about seven hundred feet. So those block lengths can get.
Like sixty second.
And there's pathways that run through as well that are presented as well. So there's a combination of the drain out with pedestrian access right here. And right here that.
Like technically, isn't it like sixty second then on the block length?
The problem has to breaking up the block length. Block five is my.
Yeah, five, the ordinance allows blocks basically when you're going along a natural managed ways of river, drains, barrel, barrier diversion, those different barriers. Block length, that's compliant, the ordinance allows for block.
So the, and the block length. Breakup with the bike path. Sixty second compliance because it has the bike. So it can be that long. It just needs the bike path.
Right, and there's multiple T at intersections along sixty second that.
I'm just concerned.
It does, but it's kind of one-sided, isn't it? I don't know. Isn't that kind of?
This, this class is. Probably first, you know, the primary version of. I'm concerned, don't have those paths can all, all the way to there in twenty-seven? Just because that's a feature that although not required by ordinance is something. Because we're really trying to maintain the, and I spend a lot of time. Spend a lot of time getting these people. Working. And this whole area is huge right now. But if there's potentially. I, I see the line has been. We have that in mind.
Uh, it's showing, it's in the master. Also that lot, um, showing that now.
Between clean, not nod.
They'll be developer. They'll be, they'll go with the development.
Oh, it will, even though it's city property here?
Well, yeah, it'd be the perfect, just like the bond speaking, dot com, the bond site, dot com. There are the projects that are, a lot of times the special assess, compare property owners.
Little discussions of this though. Then these paths on three twenty-seven.
In, in our initial kind of review was potentially having an additional pedestrian connectivity. He's been similar, like they have proposed here.
Yeah.
Somewhere on block five, and I think the initial recommendation was somewhere around twenty-three, twenty-two. Which would bring you to right here, but then having other crossing here and then you would have additional crossing south. So I guess the, the direct benefit, I mean, we would hit a lot of these, but as far as just the, the way that this development is longer than it is wide. Access is arguably. Connections right here and then this purple is all part of concrete second as well, so they would directly benefit off these accesses.
No. Especially that little ones. That's what a lot of it is. It, it is, and the families already have.
Any other questions, concerns?
Yes, that requires. Yes, that's why I agree that is.
Any other comments, questions, concerns? If not, I'll close the public hearing on both. So what did you guys like to do?
I can make a motion for approval, is it on both items or?
They're going back together.
So I can make a motion to approve the plan and the rezon for concrete second edition.
Make a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Jeff does the second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, opposed?
Aye.
Okay. So A and B passed. Alright, so we got C here, but the direct the engineer to, what did I say?
The city already created a district for this product, so it's just directing the engineer to prepare that preliminary course on.
Who makes that motion, can I get a second? Yeah, we did a second, right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Alright.
I'm going to be a simple.
Alright, move on, thirteen, Jim.
Alright, thirteen. There comes water through streets, improvement district, and two guys done with this one, that's your decision paving. Gold's worksheet here. This project has the concrete caves and carried this to industrial vision. Addition and also investor area where there's some additional issues, we do some subgrade preparation and green tile. And putting cards and paving on the areas in black here, following service lines to each of those lots if they don't have them folded.
So it's not paving the, uh, west end?
Yeah, only, it's just the west end gets some additional subgrade work because it's kind of, or at best right now. So it gets subgraded and then it gets gray tile, gray tile gets out there. So all we're doing is improving the plans and then operating out there to advertise the bits and then we'll come back with the bit. Yeah, and there's some very special assessments for. We have reached out to these, those that we can in that area, talk about their water sewer needs and talk about some phasing. The blues here, I think Paul reached out to you, or he said he did.
Yeah, somebody contacted you a couple weeks ago.
Yep, talking about phasing, your trucks getting out and stuff, so. So we've been trying to work with all that we can on there to minimize the impacts and put in stuff where it needs to be. So one of the reasons we only have water sewer service out there around the big lots, and we weren't paving the roads right away, but the development is selling a lot more quicker than we anticipated in the first beginning. So now we have to go through services in there and we've been trying to work with all of them, get it, get it in the spot where it makes sense.
Yeah, that's obviously happened a little quicker than what we were looking at initially, yeah.
Can we make sure that it gets done once so we don't have to redo things?
So I remove concrete. And then that's why in front of your area too, we're going to subgrade it here, so they can get rid of some of the frost color. That's why we are putting in the train tiles through this, to get that moisture that's coming up, get it out.
I want to get on the record that I am, I am not for paving this. I own that property out here, it's ninety-eight sixty industrial item. And we were on the Tomship Road for many years. We didn't have problems like we have when we attempted to move into the city. And when the city took over the Tomship Roads after we started to see problems. Um, we had to call the city and ask them to complete it. No, very little maintenance gets done on this road unless I call or somebody in our visible school or company. That's not the way it should be for paying taxes. You've got the equipment. I was told by the operator, he doesn't like to go on the east-west road because it's hard because of the manholes. My job is hard too, your jobs are hard too, you do them. And that's, that's real disgusting. Maintenance on that road, I believe, proper maintenance and some fix of the wet spots, we could get by with gravel over there.
I, I will tell you that I'm one of the first one to that road complete, all that road.
Yep.
He gets in, like out there, and I'm not going to say the, the skill level of the operators or whatnot because I am not able to put with him. But I will say that that road turned into absolute garbage very, very quickly.
There's no button to it.
No, and I went back out there again after he completed it, looked at it, week later, went back out there again, met with another gentleman on the opposite side of you, and visited with him a little bit, and then I went back further to the shops and met with them. Found out the gentleman that rode, rode a motorcycle on that road. Crashed, yes, um, had laid the motorcycle down because it was just too rough to drive.
We had, we had cars stuck to the top of that road this spring.
Right. Being an approach, and I, I don't disagree that in the different conditions, we may have been able to get away with gravel, but in this particular situation that we're in now, I don't think we have.
Well, but with the cost now too, the cost has skyrocketed then. You know, we really haven't been informed on what's going out there, going on out there. Um, I talked to the neighbors, they, they aren't aware of what is going on. Yeah, everybody wants to pay, but all until you start talking to numbers, the problems. And that was just budgetary numbers Jim put together.
Were those, yeah, were those renters that you're talking to?
Uh, no, they were home or property owners.
When we did the public meeting, Daniel was there. I'm just curious if people do the marketing because most of them renters, they don't really.
They don't really, who, yeah, the renters all want to pay.
Yeah.
You know, because it's, it's not their, you know, all of the.
Was it in the original contract that it needed to get paid?
At a certain percentage of lots, those are the developers.
Developers being for third edition. Makes up the vast majority of this area. And property owner, some of the developer will find the property is going to leave it on far west side. They're pushing forth for the paper, paper open to late, they want to be able to lots.
The developer should agree enough having that threshold?
You're pretty darned most intuitive, because I believe it's written, it's sold, not S B Ls.
Right.
So if they change hands from the developer, I think that's what, yeah, it starts to tip it in that paper.
Because from a city standpoint, we don't, I mean, it was discussed because we don't want gravel in the city.
There's a reason that all F West is. Not gravel.
Sure. Well, I mean, we talked about that earlier, we talked about how that was going to work, we agreed to delay.
And then test complaints.
Yeah.
Is there any difference in?
This one wasn't, this one was broken down by our standard typically the way it was structured. Nothing quite, by, it's some by area out. We haven't run this one through yet. So we got to focus six of the wall policy, but I would say when we get the numbers, the biggest one, even the policy, it's.
Rest, you had something you wanted to add?
You already covered it, because for those of you who weren't here, there was an agreement that had been appointed, this gets paid.
Yep. And that's why we decided to wait.
Yeah.
Till it was.
That discussion is also supposed to be developed for having that conversation with people that bought lots.
Correct, and we went over that.
Yes, and that was concerned.
But when the city took over the road, in front of me, there, there's some responsibility from the, for the city to be doing the maintenance.
There is, it can be done if it's not frozen or if there's not obstacles. Sometimes you are having some. I'm not going to. Probably just turn it up to. We're working on.
And, and the communication here of not knowing what is going on. Uh, I got a letter here last February, and when I got back, there had been a meeting, and that's the only thing I've seen. Communication to everybody, because I talked to the neighbors out there, they don't know what's going on.
Okay.
Rolling down.
Okay.
Um, so what I'm impressed from you is approval of the plans specs, contingent upon county review. We do have some spots that are right up against the county that we want to visit with them a little bit, just taking a chance to last. Delayed this two weeks, so contingent upon their review.
Any idea when they might get to that?
Hope is.
Okay. Maybe we're not talking in three, four weeks out. Yeah, alright.
Ask a question, so what's your timeframe, Jim? So plans will be, I can zap us a paper next week, ask for a time of fourteen days. That's it's. Probably not next meeting, but the following meeting prior to that. So hopefully we found out and you're going to find the next couple items that prices are a little bit higher. So we're going to, um, we'll have to get probably, usually we like to open bids like on Thursday for a Monday presentation, but, um, finding them to hire bids, we got to look a little bit closer at it and just see if it's something worth pursuing, so.
Because we have, we have to schedule, looking into the road.
Yeah, 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 we have that agreement, yeah, 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 so that's. Um, as far as when it could start, it's kind of all up to the company. But we would know something, they probably.
Alright, you guys have any other comments, or is it to come and look for a motion to approve the plans and specifications?
Well, this is just an approval of existing plans, aren't you seeing these plans?
Yes, it is. I'll give, yeah, we, we've talked, he's talking with.
Okay, so.
And that's contingent upon county review.
County, yep.
So I'll make that motion to approve the specs, adding to the.
Yeah, Sarah makes a motion.
Tell the contact, not send any plans. So if they want us to, I will get, or I'll have them.
Alright, Sarah made a motion, Chelsea did a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thanks for helping.
Thanks.
Move on with that, okay, advertising, got here to advertise the bids. Authorizing.
So.
Yeah. Chelsea makes a motion, can I get a second? Jeff does a second, alright, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Alright, move on, fourteen, Jim.
Alright, bids were open for water sewer storage area improvement district twenty-two dash five, Maple Lake State's addition phase two on Thursday, May nineteenth. The city received bids from three contractors, K P H appropriated a massive construction to put underground company. The tag nation was cash to memo, Karen Wilmer was at K P H, the party was bid up two million, nine hundred fifty-seven thousand, six hundred thirty-eight dollars.
Can we, the spring to catch up?
So the, uh, base bid was two million, nine fifty-seven, six thirty-eight, the engineer's estimate was three billion, seven hundred one thousand dollars. Bids ranged, master construction was three billion, three hundred twenty-two thousand, seven hundred fifty dollars, and the supporting ground was six million, one hundred sixty-four thousand, two hundred thirty-six dollars. So K P H was the contractor of the first space in Maple Lake Estates, currently working on some projects with the city. Their bidding with their pass, I'll get that right, I think that we. Billion, nine hundred fifty-seven thousand, eight dollars.
So Jim, what was the engineering estimate again on this one?
Three, seven, oh, one.
Oh, there it is, I missed it.
I got it.
Wow, that's kind of weird, huh? In this climate.
It was pretty cool, master was right there.
Yeah.
And then the corner of the ground is.
They just threw one out there. He looked and saw.
Uh, with a motion to accept the bid contingent on city's receipt of the letter of credit.
Okay.
Are we going to have a conversation with? Project about Sunday, uh, tonight?
So how would you like to?
That or I could. I think it needs.
I don't disagree. So however you want to handle that, if you want it to be a contingent, if you enable it for two, um, bids don't last as long as they used to, even if the contracts say they do.
I don't want it, like, yeah, I don't want to stop the bid, but I think a conversation has to take place.
I agree with that, I, I'm, I think the pricing is fluctuating, they could just. At this point, you kind of fully understand. So we, we work hand in hand with contractors, and they work hand in hand with. That extends to their employees, probably having. Kind of really wrong project. How did the spring on record and telling you how the delays with late winter and everything else, I, I can go on and on and on, but stuff of what you showed us. That stuff that has to be, you just don't leave something at all.
Yeah, I wish. I wish you would come to the meeting, you know, for this water project and give us an update in person sometimes, you know, it's like. Yeah.
Thank you.
I will bring up.
Alright.
Did we have any issues with the earlier Maple Lake, the state spaces, the state gauge, I just think there's.
He did. It's still not settled.
It's still not?
It's not, it's two weeks. Far as that, ours. Still. There's some bushes in there, compost and stuff.
Worse still, do you want to join that?
Not still dealing with, just. Just to get done, not that he's procrastinating. We have bushes, we have a push in the winter, then it's dino. Jeff and I talked about it a couple of weeks ago, about three, four weeks ago, three, four weeks, we talked about it. Because I had asked him if he heard anything from either, either of the residents. Yeah, we just see that.
There's some ways to ask Peter. That's what.
Alright, so.
This is all so. Well, it's just, right is right. Are you gonna make a motion?
I was gonna have some question first, Jim, on here, um. This doesn't take into account any of the, the film stuff that they need bringing up the borrow, as you guys call it?
It does. Takes into film.
There was a debt that.
Yeah.
That he got in some of the building.
So. Here it is. Item thirty-three. Jim?
Oh, there it is.
So, you just said seventy-five thousand now?
Seven thousand yards, looks like four billion. Wait.
That's a cubic yard, so.
Oh, sorry, I'm off, I was gonna do this.
Listen, forgive me for my, you know, bad memory, what was, what was the amount last meeting? That wasn't last meeting, was it seventy-five thousand yards or was it ninety-five thousand? But not, not thousand five.
No, it was ninety.
It was ninety, ninety.
Prior to bid, developer is bringing in bill on his private lots.
Correct, nine thousand five hundred yards.
So there was an alternate, a, uh, addendum issue to subtract that amount, or the anticipated amount from.
Fair enough.
Okay. So, uh, so fourteen B here looking to award the project to the most responsible bidder, K P H contingent upon the letter of credit. So I'm looking for a motion.
A vote.
Some motion, can I get a second? Okay, did a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, let's move on to fifteen, Jim.
So fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen are all high in projects, which they are, and they're projects, so obviously you will move up in their whole. Bunch is able to bid as, bid as one.
Looking on? Alright. Anything on this review or on the?
So, okay, so, um. Go down if you were sort of driving. Bids were open for all the private Southdale Farms Store, Southdale Park. Were open on Tuesday, May twenty-fourth, received bids from two contractors, Dakota Underground and K P H. Uh, the pair of little bidder was Dakota Underground with total bid of fourteen million six hundred ninety-one dollars, two hundred and eleven dollars ninety-two cents. That breaks out is open, section one with the Southdale Farms Fourth Editions, twelve million six hundred ninety-eight thousand nine hundred forty-one dollars nine hundred forty-three dollars forty-one cents. Park was seventy-four thousand three hundred nine dollars, three hundred nine dollars. Alternate number one, which is a stabilized base, was forty-four thousand, section three, the Southdale Farms Fifth, of one eight seven three nine five nine point five. Total of fourteen thousand six hundred ninety-one dollars, two hundred one dollars ninety-two cents. That is more than the engineer's estimate of eleven million eight hundred thirty-eight dollars and eighteen dollars. Twelve percent, which is in our realm to award the project. Um, as you can see, the stabilized base, pretty substantial dollar mark, forty-four thousand dollars based on, on the, on the, uh, alters, so we get it. So I would question if it will work that, because a lot of meetings that we done.
So then you come up with the ten versus them at forty, I mean.
What? Just, it's, it's such a small area that, um, we just.
Okay, I just, it just seemed like such a.
Yeah, it's, it's just, and like, and something that's like that's kind of, it's a kind of crap. So we just both nice on the both sides, so.
So when you're talking about, okay, so when you talk about stabilizing the base, where are you, I mean?
That's stabilizing.
Okay.
And that's for hauling on sixty-fourth Avenue between the, uh, Metro Farms side, um, sixty-fourth over here, over to the Southdale Farms, all of the.
Okay, I got you.
So.
They're charging that much for some mechanics?
That's what they want, that they've been at it, that's why I did it as an alternate, because I experienced C. And I personally am not, I think it's a lot of money for a little bit on the road that's going to be.
How are they going to be in that, though, during this time, they're going to have to be, uh, they real, I put on the.
Yes, there, there is, and it is, the way that the specifications were, it's very similar to a D O T spec, pre-road, pre-haul road inspection. Post-haul road inspection, and there's maybe maintenance in between. And that was our initial for the state statewide was to treat it like it was a, a haul over. Prescriptions identified, and when it's on site, they walk down the road, look at it, haul on it, it's maintained as it's being hauled on when it's done. But it's as good or better than they want. Thinking on that, as far as if the base goes or if it's a subgrade building, but I just, forty-four thousand means one. Especially when we're looking at a project already twelve percent.
How many haul trucks are we looking at going back to forty?
So when we say haul truck side match, it's gonna be side dumps, I don't think it's gonna be off, it's gonna be, it's a lot of, it's really feet to tar over there. So I assume it's gonna be a lot of side dumps, pretty much both of the side. Maybe I doubt there'll be any end dumps, mostly. Uh, we don't know who the contractors using, I know some contractors do different equipment, but I'm assuming that bill probably.
Has the cost of sewer pipe gone up that much? And that, that is where the big difference is in for your, your estimate versus.
Cost's gone up as our reinforced concrete pipe. So reinforced concrete pipe is one manufacturer right now is for tear out of haul. Usually we get two, uh, Hancock and still the other out of hauling, Hancock is not bidding anything worth a Saint Paul range. That is one of our reserves was the R C P pipe was more double what we had anticipated it was going to be. Um, right now, given the location of that, that's a big pipe, sixty-six inch pipe runs from drain twenty-seven down sixty-fourth, back down sixty-sixth into the subdivision. Um, not a lot of operations for that area or available. We had discussed this, we went with the contractor last week, today, just to kind of get a feel for them, where they were at, holiday, we got to their numbers, holiday came around with it. And, uh, we had talked about alternative pipe material. Typically, the city uses reinforced concrete pipe right away, backyard runs, areas that are not under pavement, is a polyethylene pipe or an H D P E. Sometimes we use a P V C pipe or storm sewer, just depends on whether they have thicker wall, skip the forty or something like that, uh, the contractor. Typically does not like to do H D P E under deep, just kind of, you do H D P E pipe, you have more granular bedding, you have to fill it higher, more cost with the bedding. And you do concrete pipe, you fill it with the haunches, it's near the spring language, in the middle of the pipe with gravel, you put native material on top of it. You do H D P, you have to go above the pipe with, with granular bedding material. And the cost for that granular bedding is, is pretty difficult, because you end up all in a bunch of it. As they said, in their mind, it's kind of a wash. I prefer concrete pipe on these roads, but we have some, monster of seventh or first edition, is one where there is polyethylene triple wall pipe out there. Has been done, but availability of the polyethylene, I'm going to question, thinking it. So, um, we did meet to discuss some value engineering, after fourth project, we can value engineer as far as some depth and some of the sewer. Other, maybe alternative products or something, fifth edition. Fourth edition was higher than anticipated, but I think it's a little bit more closer to what you would think, obviously a bit cheaper, the better, but.
Yeah, I think we still need to meet with Dakota after we award, but.
Uh, the park, I've said metal on the park, it's, they were fine with the price that I can get at, uh, the fifth edition was high. Fifth edition was considerably higher, that's the one where we're gonna emphasize on this is value engineering. Remember when, when we did first edition Southdale Farms, we ended up moving up station, on the other side of subdivision and to save roughly three thousand, plus thousand dollars. This contractor had been willing to value engineer and work with the city to try to maximize the project. Uh, once you missed the contract last Wednesday, talked about their bid, talked about pricing. Uh, the fifth edition is both really high on here, the, uh, park was, in fact, that I sent you the. I'll push ones on that. Uh, the fifth edition, value engineering as far as sanitary sewer. And, um, we, we did this project, we didn't know what the sixth edition on the east side of sixty-sixth street was going to bring. Now I'm applying for that, so we can find a little bit of clarity. Put the plans together for the fifth edition, the plan was to keep the sewer deep as we could to serve us all the six that serves towns. Now knowing how the sixth edition, the ground break, designers analyzing that to see what our services, if we continue down the seventeenth versus all the south venture. South venture. Uh, let her credit on this one. Don't have it.
Okay. Same deal.
It's both a date on Friday.
Developers are slow to trigger with letters of credit, it's zero, it can be.
One, yeah. Friday.
Starts in March, trying to get letters of credit, it's June, it's net.
They wanna do it just in time.
So this is one that was originally estimated, that's the need for, this is like, a lot of people thought was gonna be high.
I recall that discussion, we were like, oh, yeah. Price is on. But you look at the overall score and, and you look at. All those deals there, still within.
Twelve percent.
Twenty-five percent. Twelve.
Twelve.
Total. Okay, I can't.
It's all ready to get.
Oh, I'm looking, sorry, I was looking for the left hand, the right hand, okay. So twelve percent, that's still well within tolerance and guidelines.
So Jim, what do you think on that stabilized base, a little something we should, that don't need or not?
Just, it just adds to the special tests, we're supposed to see if we're picking up the debt. But it could be more, granted there are residents that live on sixty-fourth, we're gonna drive it in. Pre-haul road inspection.
If it gets torn up, are we gonna wind up some pending board in forty-four grand?
Yeah. I just wanna look at it.
That's my only concern, is if that, if the forty-four grand is gonna save us.
Fifth hasn't been, had been recorded.
Chris is there on two hundred seven. Two hundred.
We're looking at two hundred. Southdale Farms is two hundred four and four.
I'm, I'm wanting to know what ones of us will be affected, I think there's like seven floors, I can't call it.
Oh, yeah, there's. You're saying up on sixty-fourth?
Yeah.
Yeah, you're talking, well, you've come to this though, street, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Eight on the south side of sixty-fourth, you have. Five, one, six on the north side of sixty-fourth.
Yep.
So as you said, roughly about a dozen, over a dozen homes.
I just wanna make sure.
It could be impacted by this, uh, some, some of those properties, like one individual, but I don't think that.
Right, and there's one individual level, and there's another individual that is. Home, home care. But still, I'm, I'm not opposed to that out, because it is four times the cost in the. If we follow the standards, maintenance and inspection. Cause I'm gonna have to answer it.
Right.
All work.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, Jim, if that's, if something that, if we have to, we can mitigate that with less cost, then I have no problem. You guys say?
Well, I think they're gonna be upset, um, no question, but we have to justify the spending.
But you're, they're also like. And it was just very different. What they have experienced. So there should be improvements for. And I'm up there a lot.
Yeah, I mean, I, I guess, just, some of these projects go on, I can hold my breath, but.
Anything worth spending, that one?
Um.
I, I'm open, I'm listening, I don't mind.
I feel really bad that they have to deal with that, but I mean, yeah, the money has to come from somewhere, and I think if, would they be willing to take on a bigger chunk of that money? Probably not. So it's gonna have to come from everybody else. I don't know. I guess I would defer that. Do I think it's necessary or not, but it's a tough decision.
But just realize we were gonna have to probably have to do something up there, but if it's still cheaper than doing that, still maintain that road.
Things just bad about it, that's my only problem, is that it seems like there's so much going on and people are constantly complaining that we just let things happen and. Following through, why is it taking so long to be perfected, this, that's my concern.
Regarding why it's. That we're writing them actually.
Wow, I, I know, but I'm just saying, it just seems like we always have a nerve.
I already know. This is from.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, we can only do, you know, we can only do so much, we, it's impossible to please everyone, so we just have to do the best job we can.
What we have.
Good.
Is it gonna cost us more in the long run?
No, because they have to maintain.
Okay, that's what I can answer, because if it's gonna cost us more in the long run, all of it, but if they're forced to maintain and pay us. To do that, and we're willing to do what actions is needed. There's.
Okay, anything else on this one, there's a question for a motion to accept the most bidder with contingent of, of credit.
So can we do all of it on sinus, so you'd be awarding section one, two, three? That would be your eight, fifteen, fifteen, sixteen.
Well, you didn't split them out here on the, uh, agenda, so I just assumed they were all together.
There's, there's, they don't need to.
Oh, I see, okay, we're on the next.
We, we split them and we did all things up with.
Got it.
Well, technically, they're all in it.
Yeah, so, um. They're all the same, so. Same bidder, so, I'm okay with that, wanna put all three of them together, together, I'm sure of that.
Yes, Lucas didn't say anything, so.
Yeah, it's only fine, he'll, he'll be alright. I don't do this very often. Okay, so we wanna make a motion then? Do basically fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen, the most responsible bidder with contingency, getting that letter of credit.
I, I will take that on this one. Because sometimes you are. But however, given what we. Is coming. So I can justify that financially. Make the motion to. This as a more. This as a more. Southdale Farms, fourth, fifth, and sixth, I'm sorry, fourth and fifth positions in the upper front. So contingent on the letter of credit, that would include the section. Are you not accepting alter, not the stabilized? Am I reading that correctly?
Fantastic.
All right, so I have the uh. Motion to accept that, can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, Jim, does a second, all right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Sure. Great, let me move fast forward to eighteen.
All right, Mr. Mayor Council, on the opposite end of the spectrum, the water sewer, Starve Street of Brooklyn District, twenty-one, that's five, area one thirty, this is. On Thursday, June second, we see bids from three contractors, master construction, a hundred dollar number improvement. A low bidder was master construction, a bid of one million, six hundred nineteen thousand, nine hundred sixty-two dollars and fifty cent. The estimate that was provided by the uh, design engineer, developer, his estimate was one million, seventy-eight thousand dollars, so. With that being said, the low bid was exceeding forty percent of the project's forty percent, uh, over the engineer's estimate, therefore, the project asked that cannot be awarded according to the Quocentric Code. My recommendation means to reject bids and rebid at a future date. Did meet with the developer this afternoon and his engineer in the city, they were fine with rejecting these bids and considering this thing.
Uh, oh.
As long.
Yeah, that's, I was just doing the quick math and they just said, well, the contract appears to be those outside of the sidelines. Based on the first time I was really focused on the project.
It's fifty point three percent.
Yeah.
So. Um, we did meet with, like I said, developer, developers, engineers this afternoon. Um, we did come up with a project schedule, we will be revising the engineer's estimate, revising the preliminary. Expect the term pricing, bring it back, move forward with a completion date that might extend into next year. Get the underground done this year, next year. Uh, one thing to the developer, one of the long lead items, and that's the one, we see standing here with sanitary sewer handlers, they're a couple of dollars up each. And the developer, in order to expedite this, is interested in just seeing that himself, in stabbing them, should buy the city. So to try and speed up some of that underground, cause the pipe isn't available, but the structure is in the meantime.
Yeah.
So we'd be willing to reach out and get those, have them on site and then.
Wow.
So we just get a motion tonight rejecting all bid?
Yep. Directly. Here's a, pre-bid.
I'll make that motion.
Delcie makes the motion, can I get a second? Just a second, all right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
It was talked about this afternoon, right, somebody had asked about.
No, we, we not be rebid after next toss of the access we need to amend the engineers. So you know, so the next meeting, engineer award.
All right, Jim, you got nineteen.
All right, so number nineteen is water approval district of one twenty-one dash six, it is a change order, call for the asphalt justification price. Uh, I got this later on, later on in the day, I apologize for that, I thought it was an international, but it's not, so. Change order three increases contract amount by a net thirty thousand, three hundred seventy-two dollars. Contractor provided documentation as far as, okay, we'll read this. Requested a unit price. Given replacement due to supplier oil price increase and fuel costs for hauling. Project's original completion date was November twentieth, two thousand twenty-one. Bid on June tenth and awarded in. To change orders and sponge them from substantial completion now August sixth, twenty twenty-two, with a final completion of August thirteenth, twenty twenty-two. Uh. Contractors submitted a breakdown of the year-to-year cost differences for asphalt and fuel. Original contracted price for pavement replacement was thirty-eight dollars per square yard. Including the cost of the two with pavement preparation, subperiodary area based course, traffic control, through the work, finishing all materials that. Who called for additional cost difference in oil, contractors requested additional three dollars per square yard, pavement replacement item. Estimated increase for ten thousand to forty square yards, at three dollars per square yard will be thirty dollars, that's what we're talking about. So they provided the information from Horace State's paving that shows in two thousand twenty-one. EG straighted asphalt fifty, S twenty-eight, three dollars and ninety cents. Crookston, it was taxed, works out to about four hundred and twenty-one dollars fifty cents. Twenty, twenty, twenty-two grand works, shows up to five hundred ninety-five dollars and twenty-five cents, which is a difference of a hundred and seventy-three dollars and seventy-five cents per ton between last year. And this year's price, so they must have been with twenty-twenty numbers of increase was for twenty-twenty. So, um, they did provide, like I said, Horace State's paving provided a location, they created fifty-eight of each. Provided all their documentation, so it's not, it's pretty, pretty well documented what their issue is, so. Um, this is a pretty, doesn't surprise me, I guess, there's an increase to the oil.
Doesn't surprise me either, but I'm gonna make a comment here.
Comment.
Saying that when you bid a project, you in essence take a gamble. And I, I realize that this project is stretched out, okay? And I'm willing to be fair, if it were me, I am gonna ask what the other consultant members think, but at this point in time. You take a gamble in bidding project and are expected in bidding to cover your costs for things like this. So we have other issues, the issue that we discussed previously, that I cannot reflect here, right? As tempting as it is, I can't do that, so I'm going to propose this because I believe that they have an accountability. The bid of projects stand by their bid price, I do realize that we have extraordinary circumstances in this year and the fact that this project has gone over. A sequence of change orders due to material availability, due to weather, due to any number of things that have drawn this net by now. I would propose immediately, not authorized before asked, but I'm open to saying, we'll cover half of it, you cover half of it. You honor your gamble in bidding and we will cover the other part of it. And there'll be on material and labor, they can figure out how they wanna do it, but I think that's very. What do you guys?
Well, and also, I mean, they could have done some of that asphalt work last fall.
Right.
So by extending the completion date, like, was done. Number of things wasn't, isn't the last fall.
Oh, so though.
So I don't disagree, and there's a reason why I brought it forward to you tonight, is because I wanted your opinions on it.
Seems like it was definitely could have been done last fall.
So what was that?
Well, they had it all prepped.
They had it prepped, they didn't have passing compactions, they just filled the holes back up, not getting compaction in the densities.
Were the quads still going that time?
They shut them down earlier, as far as to the exact date when they shut off, I don't know.
I, I, I know that there was a discrepancy there, cause I do recall the, on that, that there was a couple months that had already shut down or they were ready. But I don't disagree, in some cases.
Yes.
So I mean, I do really table it, grab the specials that I could tell we brought up today. And if you're going halfway, if they wanna have a meet, we can have it.
I would love to have.
Okay, so you guys wanna do a table it then? End of discussion?
Do you have a discussion with them about sharing expenses?
I would, um, I know, and Sally asked us, you know, fill out that three question thing for the, the end of the year, the only thing I put down was. The Horace Water Project, literally, that is the only thing I put down in there, is just getting that completed. And for some reason, I see this keep dragging out, um.
Yeah, and the lack of, like, I mean, the roads are very.
They are, yeah, it's just gone, but in all fairness, we do have to recognize. It's over to the most serious. But, and they had unbelievable material delays, which I can vouch for because I'm experiencing the same thing in my industry. Does that make it right? No, could they have put more labor on it? Absolutely, could they have dedicated more equipment? Yes, which is why I'm saying. I'm not going to cut you off at the knees and say, take this loss, I'm gonna say, you have some accountability to.
Totally agree with that, yes, they, they should at least. Put forth the effort to try to get this done, that's all I'm trying to get at, is that, like I said, there was literally only one thing I put down for those three questions, cause that was the only thing that really mattered to me, is just getting it done with this particular developer, so.
This was saying that we.
So we're still on the schedule for revised amendment.
August.
August.
So yes, I'm willing to table it if we have a discussion, if you wanna be on that discussion, by all means, have fun.
Did we know it was gonna be like wait till the end to just do all the asphalt at once, cause I thought they were gonna fix.
At the time of, like, the end of last year, it was discussed that. Do prefer to do a whole bit more. Probably be all lead, but do it budget to marshalling, I think it's worked very soon, so, um. In hindsight, we probably should have done two blocks at a time or something like that, but cost-wise, the effect of, I don't know. Like hindsight.
Well, yeah, I mean, in hindsight, yeah, they're. They're saving it all till the end, I mean, it's kind of, then they took some risk on the cost going up, I mean, I think could have known the cost was gonna go up.
Truth to that, so, all right, when it is, that's fine.
Do you guys want a table?
Yeah.
Have a talk? Yes. Table nineteen, talk about it again on June twenty. Brent, you got the food truck bid?
Hey, I have a little more to leave back. Uh, food trucks, right now, our current working requirements of food truck permits, applications come to city council for approval. Uh, we'll address that within your next agenda, however, we have received one application from Adamon. They have been worse last two years, uh, for trying to get food trucks to come down here. Very willing to come down to worse, but they enjoy coming down here, that's why they're fine to be able to be, yeah. So I spent all paperwork, understanding, permit, application, so that's our. It's a permit.
Okay, any questions?
Where's the, the vendor you have?
The very next student there.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm just.
She's gotta make a motion.
Make a motion to approve. The vendor term like Adamon.
Give us a second, all right, all in favor, say aye.
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 Here's number twenty-one then.
Next one here is regards to the ordinance regarding food trucks. Uh, Lucas helped me out, helped on this one, we drafted revision to this ordinance. And I'm sure what it does is removes requirement of having council have to approve food truck permits. That will make a. Should, if you like, um, this is the first reading. Change. First one, second. Next reading.
I want this idea. I don't wanna have to have. I want people to, we don't have to be nuts to say, come on.
No reason, the twenty-five dollar permit has. These guys know the ordinance is being a lot imported, they should be holding that call, one is worth, both five of their company, where they're gonna be.
I'll make a motion to approve the first reading.
Justin, make a motion.
Go ahead.
Who's got it?
I don't think about it.
Got it. Delcie made a motion, you have a second, all in favor, say aye.
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 She carries on twenty-two.
Next one here, very similar, the sooner it's to liquor license reguls, biggers, Casey's, then girl. By number one, or you can do it visually, all of them have. Smith, their payment, their fees for reimbursement. Not got any issues, acknowledge. Tell them liquor, but I hear these entities, so.
Yes, um, I suppose I. Have we issued. On sale?
That they are being, for the, it's being.
Um, this is kind of a big deal to me.
It would be for the. I'm like, like the story, sorry.
Yeah, cause we can't, we haven't helped it before.
What are you?
I know. I'm sorry, I just, that was. I, I just wanna make sure that we're doing our due diligence, I make sure that we're, we're gonna be. Lady license without we even mature the rights.
So Brent, why don't you go through, it's for the three here, so biggers is on sale, off sale, Casey's is off sale.
Casey's is off. And girl is on.
And off. Are you sure they're not off sale too, that the girl?
Do they sell bottles of wine?
They saw.
They saw, they can't, you.
They didn't apply for an off sale.
We don't check it.
You might wanna clarify that with them.
What's that play?
They need a play. It was on sale, off sale, and retail.
Detail line.
They did, um, no, they got the same. And thingers, they got retail on and off sale off, and then they corrected Casey's to off sale, retail.
There's a line.
Yeah, I think they have, yeah, three. There's only three classes in the ordinance.
So do we need separate motion?
Oh, they're in line, also craft beer.
Yeah, they got, it, it was just, um, I, yeah, on our ordinance, there's just like three classes, so it was like alls.
On offerable.
On offerable, this retail. Like fifteen fifty for everything, or just, or off sale with seven fifty. But biggers and the girl were given the same.
Was both on, for the girl, on, Casey's.
Can I make a motion for all three, or you wanna separate?
All three, do your move.
Right, I'll make a motion to, for the license reguls, for biggers, Casey's, and the girl.
Okay, can I get a second on that?
Yeah.
There is a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Twenty-three, all right, Brent, go.
Yeah, the next one here is request from biggers, they are having a Johnny Bull contract. Twenty-fifth, and they're requesting street closure, um. From Center Street to Main, they're asking for that street to be closed. Be any request for it to be, probably seventeen, they're asking for seventeen. Also, if street close, they say their request here is clear as hell. So what they're asking for, street closure from Fire Hall north to center. In center. Went from seventeen to the east there, basically where the park. Uh, street closure from nine hundred seventeen, council is alright with that part. Got this little layer to the county commission, and request the closure mission also. Anytime we do, like, for example, bean days. Layer request. Overall, what they want to do is to be able to have a giant concert there. They only have one up for the twenty fifth, they've been advertising that. Really wish it was, I asked earlier.
And before they had it.
Before it was advertised. But overall, that is what the request is for. Next, I had a new request to be able to wear the concert liquor outside. Basically, all. Or, or Biggers, or the center.
Are they providing additional security? Since that's technically.
I believe they're supposed to pass security.
They did last year.
And they have done this.
The room they're showing here is three P M. Is that?
Block off for setup.
Okay.
That's not uncommon. And then they are supposed to clear the street afterward. Right, after, so that'd be why they did our best is to say, one, a m. And they're asking for the street close until two. Like, we know it's supposed to be on the street.
So we would have to provide those city works people to close and then reopen it at.
Basically, we want to lock off their own. They'll move barricades over to the side, the girl. Uh, after barricade is done, and then we'll take a public, public.
Are they using just barricades or they putting semi in the way? I mean, they used to put a semi in the middle of the street so that nobody got ran over.
If, if, if they do the semi, they would have that, but barricades also. I don't know if I'm correct, but they went at angle here on Center seventeen. That's semi. They just moved that.
Anything else on that?
All asked. So for the first one, street closure. Being approved from council, the council's approved that. And then I would, and then I would, then they're willing to request county seventeen. And if you want to combine this, you can, what they're asking for, R B, it's a special events permit. Sorry, you're outside.
How far now, this, this way?
They can't hear, they can't hear if you're with fire, you know.
So like the one o'clock thing, I guess, is the only comment I have. And I know we've done this, but I know people get upset about the one o'clock thing. You know, it does seem, oh, a bit late for people that have to, you know, have to, but um, I think it's really nice that they have the event because a lot of people love it. So I'm for it, but I just, I do feel some sympathy for those people that don't want.
And being, uh, it's infrequent.
Yeah.
But I do understand that. I will take full calls. Okay, so you guys want to do about the street closure? Yeah.
Okay, um, whether it's bean days or Bigger's days or whatever, uh, concerns I have are two thirds of my responders live north of Walt, and they have to be able to get into the station. We do have a tow. That one all the way, you know, round to come up from the south end. And then the second part is, is if I've got to roll an engine, we normally roll out to go north. I can't go north, which really extends the expense type or response time. So one of the things I'm also gonna ask is, because we've had it twice since I've been here the past four years, we tried to roll out the back door. I can't get out over here on the west side of the water tower because of parking, and I can't get it down the senior center because of parking. Yeah. Because of where people park. So if I can have promise or whatever, enforcement for no parking between on the north, because then I can face all my engines to the west and get them out. But I gotta have this full path open all the way on the west side of the water tower, then around the senior center. And people do not pay attention because they just think they can park wherever they, you know. And then the last time we had to go through Mickey Mouse, we had to pack up. And over here where I had to get my big engine, I was driving the tender, which is even worse. And I had to spend about five or eight times just going forward about two feet, back about two feet, forward two feet, back about two feet.
That's second.
I don't know, what can we do to block that all off, so?
Well, you know, the Parco Marathon, when I did that, my, my folks live on Route. They put signs and posters that say, no parking from Friday to six to Saturday at.
We could, we could, we would do it for bean days, but long for a year, I'll not temporary, no parking signs, so they could constantly. They can park in front of the trees.
And then we did like, uh, yellow tape up the back so that people. And I mean, I don't know if we're doing all this, like, for Biggers, or they need to do it. I mean, the signs maybe, but like putting up all that yellow tape and stuff, I mean.
I think it's have that discussion because you clearly need access, right?
I know that residents probably wouldn't appreciate us going out of our way for Biggers. You know, putting up all that's thing. Parking stuff. So. Absolutely. I just think it, you know.
But I believe.
Make sure that no parking, no parking.
Yeah.
Fires like you. So there'd be, you can center here.
Yeah, I have no, I have no issue with it. I just know people complain if we're like catering, you know.
Yep.
Whatever, so.
And I, and I just say that, like I said, good safety and be all work.
Yeah, definitely needs to be gotten.
But sure. Well, I think they, they understand where they're coming from, that there's something called supporting local.
Yeah.
And that local business, regardless of that, you know, have an opinion that they shape the form. You do want to work with our. Now, Brent, put up a few signs.
That's small, but you're in.
No, and I don't, we don't need to get into it. I was just, you know, if it's just something people will say, so.
Yep.
They're out there all afternoon doing stuff for, for Kelly.
Alright, so we want to do about the street closure, done.
Is this enough time to give the county notification?
Should be typically, if I get a layer two this week.
I have no problem making.
Is it close?
Taking into consideration. You see, that would be.
Okay.
Do you want to combine this with the council permit?
Sure.
Yeah.
And also.
And if I could clarify, sir, authentic rules, no parking from what I'm gonna call the north uh, east corner of the Fire Hall, south. Because we've had some real contentious conversations with Yon over there. Because they actually at times blocked the entire fire lane on the south side.
You guys are gonna be using the west side though, right?
No, but I still gotta be able to go south to fires responding on the south side. That path was just for going north and getting my firefighters in.
I need to make sure I'm understanding.
Right, so I still gotta be able to go both ways.
That point.
Well, I'm just saying, if the guys are out there working all day, roping off and stuff, like, I mean, I don't know, like, a fee? I don't know. I don't really care personally. I'm just thinking about like what other people are gonna be saying. So, and we don't need to, honestly, let's, it's just some of food for thought, really, is all.
Is there, is there a fee for the special permits?
Special permits, permits. It's covered.
And yeah, maybe that goes up if this involves a lot of effort, you know, that, there you go. Like, just keep that in mind for future fees, if it needs to go up.
Chelsea, maybe. I'm not definitely the one to go to those ones that are planning above some policy, well, not very. If you have a fire that are by the park, cannot respond to someone.
I don't think that it's about whether or not it should be roped off.
It's people who make that they're using city that for a bigger stage, is what I'm understanding.
Right. But, yeah, that the residents have to pay to go to for profit, you know, it's just whatever. Let's move on.
Okay, so I have a motion from Sarah. Then we did a second for the closure and a special event permit. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
She carries for both.
Mr. Mayor, just a touchback in the previous ones, we have sleep tonight. There's five different classes of licenses in the city for us. Wholesalers, retail, on and off premises, beer, wine, and liquor. Retail, off premises, beer, wine, and liquor. Retail, club or lodge, on sale liquor. Retail, club or lodge, on sale here. And if you want a place for a winery, distillery, microbrew pub, microbrew pub.
We did add those, that's right.
If the right licenses are to these people.
So the, the two, the main two that the city does, it was the two and three.
This was just in case.
Yeah, it's all, that was others, I'm sure. I think those are based on the city.
Alright, so.
Alright.
The vector. Yeah, I was gonna say, you're Russian.
I think we're on number twenty seven.
We're on. You want?
I'll take clarity.
Okay, next one here, it's Cass County Vector Control Agreement. It's the annual agreement that we have with Cass County. Uh, for mosquito control, this is the mitigation efforts that they do, so I ended up trying to, before it is. Uh, it doesn't, it does happen to the agreement, uh, where we could contract with them to have a spray, however, uh, we do our own spraying. It'd be a lot more aggressive and timely with our spray compared to rest of the metro. They've contracted a vector for that. We also have a part in here, number five, which allows up to eight thousand dollars to use for the mitigation efforts in mosquito control. T, um, I have problems with, uh, they would spray, they would do mitigation efforts to save limits. We have areas of horse, like, elephants and stuff there right by D D.